Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 2nd, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us either in person or you can also watch us live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Mr. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Burnson, Glanter, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miss Cazey, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, ten members present, and Quorum. Mr. President?
Thank you very much. This being Tuesday and the first meeting of the week, we do have a tradition of having somebody lead us in the salute to the flag as well as a moment of inspiration. I'd ask everybody to please stand for our flag salute and would ask a veteran, Council Member Nate Holden, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We're having the court trying to decide how patriotic we are and to whom we look for our blessings. We're going to send them a message this morning and put our hands over our hearts and say, repeat after me, "A pleasure legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much, Mr. President. I hope he got the message.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Before we proceed, I know you have a presentation this morning. I would recognize Rabbi Freeling to please lead us in a moment of inspiration.
As we anticipate the celebration of the Fourth of July, I was thinking about the oath of office that all of us have taken, in which, among other things, we have promised to uphold, to protect the Constitution of the United States. And I was thinking about the various liberties that are guaranteed within the Constitution. And then the thought occurred to me, taking a leaf from the opera Faust, that what would happen if someone came along and promised us that we would live a life of tranquility and serenity if we would be willing to give up one of the freedoms that is guaranteed to us in the Constitution? And then we would be challenged to come up with that freedom that we would be willing to renounce for the sake of serenity and tranquility. And I dare say that if, in fact, any of us met that challenge, there is not a freedom that we would be willing to forsake. And having said that, then it seems to me that within your office, as leaders of this city, as you have sworn to protect the Constitution of the United States, among other documents, that always must there be before you the various freedoms that are guaranteed in that document and freedoms that are guaranteed within the state constitution and the city council and the rules by which you operate. And to remember that there are always those people lurking in the shadows who wish to take freedom and liberty away from some for their own sake. We must never, ever allow them to gain a victory, but rather, as we go through our daily task, as you go through the series of decisions that you are constantly making here in chamber as well as in your offices, that you've got to always think about what the consequences are of those decisions. Are you advancing the cause of freedom and liberty for your constituents? And if so, how then are you trying to influence others to learn from your modeling that you do, to learn from the example that you make, so that we can spread wide across this city of ours? Not only the celebration of the Fourth of July with picnics and fireworks and a day from work, but more importantly, to use that occasion the day after tomorrow, to remind ourselves of how blessed we are and to remind ourselves that there are those people within the world who wish to emulate the United States, while at the same time, there are those who, because of their jealousy and because of their self-interest, wish to bring us down. Never, ever give a victory to those people who are detractors, but rather allow us, all of us, to learn from your example of what leadership is all about. As you think about each and every person, as you think about the diverse groups which occupy Los Angeles and make this city really unique in this land and in the world, bringing to all of us a renewed sense of liberty and justice and all of those freedoms which we celebrate on the Fourth of July, let this be not only the way in which you conduct yourselves today and not only let this be the thoughts that we carry with us on the Fourth of July, but in your constant daily efforts to advance the cause of Los Angeles and all of its diverse peoples. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Rabbi Freeling. The Chair recognizes Mr. Holden for his presentation.
How are you doing? Mayor of Hollywood. Mr. President, members, this city council, this body in Los Angeles has never, never, ever had visiting it at one time so many famous, well-known athletes. Never in the history of the seat of Los Angeles have all these well-known, renowned athletes come together at one specific time here in these chambers, and they'll never be the same in these chambers. We have an individual here that we're going to honor and give recognition to, Mr. Mal Whitfield. Everybody knows about Mal Whitfield. But, Mr. President, members, joining with him and those who think so highly of him and decided they'll give up their time and busy schedule today just to witness this ceremony are Art Braggs, 100th in the Olympian. Just stand. William Archie, 800, all right, Olympian. Ron Morris, the pole vaulter. Eight-year-old Mike Constituent, who played for the Rams. They've traded five players for him. The Ali Masson, 400. Mr. President, members, another gentleman, I don't know if he's here or not, but he's scheduled to be here, the Bob Mathias, the Decathlon. I'm sure, well, in any case, I remember meeting him back in New Jersey when the guy, when he was a guy named Milk Campbell, young kid, 17 years old, they were competing together, and I met Bob Mathias, and he gave a great speech about this young kid in 1952, 53. So he's a wonderful person. We still can expect him. And of course, we all know our commissioner, former commissioner, humanitarian, civic servant here for the city of Los Angeles. He was to be here, Rafe Johnson, Decathlon. Rafe is not here yet, but I'm sure he will be showing up. And they all send their respects, and there was a great diver, we all know, Sammy Lee. He was a speech here also. So, Mr. President, members, all of these, and I may have missed some, and if I do, introduce them, these are friends, some of the friends of Mr. Mal Whitfield. We just all stand. Incredible, incredible. President, this is a certificate of commendation for a guy that I've heard so much about when I was growing up, but I was still older, I think. And he was such a great athlete. He was a role model for all of the young men and women in our community. We could look up to guys like Joe Louis. We could look up to sports athletes like Sugar Ray Robinson and others, but there was always a Bob, I'm sorry, Mal Whitfield. Always Mal Whitfield, Sullivan Award, Wardy, and so on. He accomplished just about everything one could accomplish, along with many others who were here this morning, Mr. President, members. It's a great pleasure for me to introduce to you one of the finest track stars ever. He's a veteran of the United States Air Force, a statesman who has traveled the world, meeting with presidents' kings and just regular folks. In 1948, he won an Olympic gold medal for his record 800-meter run in London, England, making him the first U.S. military serviceman on active duty to win a gold medal. In fact, he has a total of five Olympic medals from 1948 to 1952. I mean, what an achievement. And these were tough times. Jackie Robinson having a tough time, Magic Mal Whitfield, raised in Watts, as the Williams Girls were, produced a lot of great athletes. He graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School. He flew 27 combat missions during his Korean War and practiced for the Olympics on an Air Force runway. Now, you've seen where Jesse Orin was racing a horse, but they tell me that, Mal, I ran the plane. After the service, he earned his college degree from Los Angeles State College, now known as Cal State LA. He spent 34 years in U.S. Farm Service Department promoting international sports competition and travel to more than 132, more than 132 countries, I imagine. He has trained dozens of athletes around the world and arranged for scholarships in order for them to study in the United States. He is a member of the National Track and Field Hall of Fame, the Olympics Hall of Fame, and has received numerous awards, commendations, and honors. Today, he's with us promoting the L.A. Track Nuts. Got to get them all back involved again, highlight Track, Field and Track, an organization devoted to promoting more public interest in the sport of track and field. Colleagues, please put your hands together and welcome Mal Whitfield, Olympian statesman, and all around, just a nice guy.
Mr. President, members of council, I think we should really take notice of these great individuals who are here today. Olympic athletes are as dedicated as any athlete and even more so, and the work that they do to achieve their greatness is certainly to be commended and know what you do. And track and field is one of the greatest sports because it's the individual effort. It really takes that determination as someone to commit themselves. And the great Olympian of the London Games, U.S. serviceman, I didn't know that, Nate. Thank you for bringing the only gold medal to the U.S. serviceman to receive that. It's very special. But being a Democrat from Jefferson High School is very special because my mentor was Mel Davis, who some of you may know from the UCLA and the Baltimore Colts. It still holds the NFL record, Ali, for the most interceptions in least amount of games. He's retired up in Oregon after a long career with the school district. But all of you are very special, and you're from Los Angeles. So I want to pledge my support to work with Councilman Holden and work with all of you, Track Nuts. That's great, because if you're running on a track, you're not running in the streets. Okay, so let's hear it for Track Nuts.
All right, Mr. Freeling. Good morning, everybody. I'm delighted to be here and especially with my colleagues from the Track Nuts throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we do have membership of members from various institutions around the USA, and we tend to grow. Our purpose in organizing this wonderful organization is to promote and bring back athletics to its normal role in the society of USA. We've got one of the greatest sporting events, and that is athletics, known throughout the world as athletics, not track and field, that is the first organized games of all creation. And we hope to bring it back to some normality, and that is to allow young people a chance to participate in a sport that is governed by the rules, a sport that is a chance to express themselves, and it is coeducational. So thank you very much for this kind presentation for me, but it is not only for me, it's for the group, the members who are with this wonderful organization. We hope that you will continue to support us and understand what we're trying to do, and that is to give tutorship and counseling for young people who have potential to represent our great country, and this is the greatest country in the world. I know that. You don't have to tell me that. I know it is great because I represented this great country. And amongst all conditions, and conditions are not always the same, and not everybody likes Americans. We are ahead of the game, and let's continue to stay ahead of the game by supporting my organization called the Track Nuts. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank Nate for bringing all of these great athletes in here. great athletes in here. And I just, I know Brian Williams also, and I, Brian ran the 400 meters, and I used to try to run the 440 and 660 in high school, but Mal Whitfield held the world's record for 400 meters for a number of years, right? Quite a few. Thank you, thanks for coming down, and congratulations on your new organization.
Mr. Labange.
I just want to ask, I just want to ask all the Olympians to stand up again who participated on the Olympics, please stand, and Nate, I think we just want to recognize, these are the great Olympic athletes of the United States who served us in Los Angeles, and I just wanted to make sure they get recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval over the minutes.
Ms. Gruehl moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Holden seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, item number 33 is commission appointments, the appointment of Johnny Grant to the Cultural Heritage Commission. There is an Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee waive this consideration of this and the mayor's recommendation.
Okay, let's give the crowd just a second here to file out, and in a minute, I would ask Johnny Grant to please come forward. Members before us is a confirmation of a commission nominee. Who said there was only one mayor in this town?
There's only going to be one in Hollywood, I'll tell you that.
Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, Johnny Grant, USO, supporting our troops, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, Hollywood Christmas Parade, you and Mike Tidlemann, where's Mike, sitting out there in the audience? The legendary people of Hollywood, Hollywood and Highland, the Hollywood Walk of Fame, I remember you and Bill Welsh and all the wonderful work Bill did with you, God bless him. And whatever kind of commissioner appointment you need, Johnny, you got. Because you are truly a legend in Hollywood, a legend in Los Angeles. And when I go to my favorite restaurant with Tom Labange and sit at Russo &amp; Frank's and talk to the cook there, we always talk about Johnny Grant and Hollywood, and how wonderful things are in Hollywood and the city of Los Angeles. So you've got it, Johnny, continue the progress, continue the loyalty to the city of Los Angeles and representing us in the proud manner which you do, again, from the Hollywood Parade and supporting the military troops, if you've done for all these years, you are definitely a true hero to us, and proud to support you and your endeavor. Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. It's an honor to have Johnny Grant as a friend, it's honored to have Johnny Grant as a mayor of Hollywood, and it's honored to have his leadership for our Cultural Heritage Commission. His work, as Councilman Zine spoke of so eloquently, goes back years and years. And having known him, his great relationship that he's had with this city of Los Angeles, his work with all the mayors, Mr. Grant, what mayor did you first meet when you?
Mayor Bowron.
Mayor Fletcher Bowron.
Murray Polson.
Polson.
Sam Yordi.
Right.
Tom Bradley, and of course, Mayor Reardon, and now with Mayor Hahn.
And who was the best mayor?
Uh, get out of here.
See, that's why Johnny Grant will be a great commissioner, because he's smart. But that great history of Los Angeles and the relationship, the interwoven relationship between Los Angeles and Hollywood and the community. And I've had the pleasure of working for John Ferraro for many years, and John was a dear friend of yours, and I remember the great call we got from you on the Desert Storm Parade, it was at kind of a last-minute thing, but we put together one of the greatest parades in the country to welcome back the troops from Desert Storm down Sunset Boulevard. But also the work that, on the Hollywood Parade, which is so important, parades are an important part, and with the Cultural Heritage Commission, I want to charge to see more of that effort to encourage communities to have parades. We know we have them in Canoga Park, we know we have them in the Sutherland to Hugga, this Fourth of July parade, and throughout the city. So I'm just very pleased to stand and to salute you, Johnny Grant, to salute you for all that you've done for the USO. I love having Johnny Grant, he's a former fire commissioner, which is so important. If you checked him out, he's got Dalmatian in his blood, and the injured's run out of Firehouse 27, he's looking to see where they're going. His work with the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, which is the second-largest chamber in the state and a driving force for revitalization, he led the effort this morning for the dedication of the Sunset and Vine, groundbreaking for a new project there that Magic Johnson and the Bond brothers are involved in, others, Phil Angelidis, which was great from the state. So I'm just pleased to be there. This is one special person who will add to the other special people who serve on this board and to contribute greatly to our cultural heritage. So I rise to salute you, Johnny, and also endorse your nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Before calling the next council speaker, we do have one speaker card on this item, Mr. Al Nodal, familiar face to the city family.
This is the second time in a week that I've been here, and I won't do it too often, but I'm here for Johnny Grant. I've worked with Johnny in the trenches of historic preservation over the last twelve years that I was Cultural Affairs General Manager, and I don't know anybody who's more sensitive to the history of this city and more knowledgeable on how to preserve it than Johnny Grant. He oversees one of the most complex historic monuments in our city, which is the Hollywood Walk of Fame. It's a very complex monument, because it's one of the few monuments in our city where at least two million people walk on on a yearly basis, maybe it's more than two million, but twenty million people walk on. A cultural heritage monument in the city is walked on by twenty million tourists. And Johnny Grant has been in the lead of really preserving this monument, and it's a complex thing, and I don't know anybody who would be better for the commission than Johnny, so I'm here to endorse him. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Well, John has no historical background. All kidding aside, Johnny, we go back a number of years, I remember when you were with KMPC, that's how far back, so, you know, but I can't think of anybody that's more qualified for this position, because he himself is historical to this city and to Hollywood. Johnny Grant is a historical monument to Hollywood and to our city. And I'm glad the mayor made this appointment, I can't think of a better appointment that could have been made, and I can't think of anybody that knows more about the historical background of not only the movie industry, Hollywood, but of our city. So Johnny, thank you very much for being willing to serve on this commission.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, it's great to have our CD-13 resident, the great honorary mayor of Hollywood, Johnny Grant, here. We were together this morning at the corner of Sunset and Vine, and if you could have seen Johnny, I know you've all seen him do it before, but telling the stories of the past about what Hollywood was once and will be again, this would be obviously a no-brainer for all of us. Johnny's somebody who tells it like it is, and when you're doing a bad job, he's not afraid to tell you, and when you're doing a good job, he'll tell you that too. And that's why I especially appreciate his leadership in keeping the city together as well. He's somebody who has been a loyal critic of this city and has asked for it to do better, and has helped us to do better. And as such, as a council member, you've made my job more inspiring and easier to do by setting that bar high and saying you have to meet it, and then finding that as inspiration to get there. I think as Councilmember Burnson said, Johnny Grant is cultural heritage, and I don't know if we can nominate him for a monument number today, but we will get to that in short order. And I hope that everybody will unanimously support Johnny. He is somebody, and I want to say this about preservation, because I know this has been an issue, Johnny's somebody who understands how to get preservation done, which is a political process, let's all be frank about it. It takes not only raising money, navigating the turbulent waters of politics, but also saying, at the end of the day, we have to make sure that heritage is something that's living. And when we have two million people who walk on this great monument, or twenty million people, however many it was that Al said, we want to make sure they're not tripping on it too. And I appreciate your leadership there on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and we'll continue to press forward to make sure that that sparkles the way that it should. Thank you for everything you've done in Hollywood, thank you for your leadership, and this should be a no-brainer for all of us, I strongly, strongly support your nomination, hope that you all do the same, colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, President, Council President, colleagues. Mr. Grant, it's an honor to stand before you, and I want to share my thoughts in terms of just letting you know how much I appreciate all the work you do. The Cultural Heritage Commission, yourself, are a key element in making sure that the whole city understands that we are made up of many unique neighborhoods, and our ability to preserve this history gives that value to the whole city. And as one city, we are able to amplify that history, we amplify that heritage that we have. And as a representative, where I have the three original markers of the city in my district, I can tell you that for some of us, these are faceless communities, industrial yards, forgotten neighborhoods, but in fact, if you look close, you look at these beautiful buildings, the beautiful architect, the beautiful history, which you had pointed out over and over again, what Hollywood means, that in and of itself has allowed us to move forward in a grand way. So I want to thank you for your great effort, thank the Cultural Heritage Commission, and hopefully the whole city can recognize the beauty of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Johnny, I can think of no greater symbol, other than the Hollywood sign of Los Angeles and what's good about it than you. And I think you are one of the greatest reasons and embody why we should stay together, so I'm, as a city, that is. So I'm thrilled that you're going to be here, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Other members wishing to be recognized? Mr. Holden.
Mr. Hollywood, you know, you forget that Hollywood is there except when you see a parade, or you see some star being, some person being honored by placing of a star, or if that's not happening, no matter where you see Johnny Grant, you see Hollywood, in my mind. I know that's where he's from, I know that's what he's for, I know what he stands for, and of course, he's not, you call him the honorary mayor, but if you want to get things done, you go to the top, you go to the mayor. And if you need something done in Hollywood, you go to Johnny Grant, he'll get it done for you. I don't care what it is you ask him, he always will find a way, he knows who most people are, who moves and is shakers, in that, in that community, and in the city. Johnny has always been a pleasure to see you at work for all of us. You do things that we can't do for our own constituents, our city, and you're kind of a guy that has made a mark, will always be remembered, and never ever forgotten. In that way, I'm saying, Johnny, your life will go on forever.
Thank you.
Forever. Nice to work with you, and I'm glad that you accepted this position. Now, when the matter for the 10th District come before you, please consider me.
Ms. Gruehl.
Mr. Grant, we had the pleasure of meeting you when I worked for Tom Bradley, and had the, you were such a wonderful individual in supporting Hollywood in this city, and I come from DreamWorks in my last life, so your publicity of Hollywood was great for us as well, and I want to join in my colleagues and congratulate you. You just keep on giving so much to this city and to this community, and you can tell we appreciate all that you're doing, and as a member of the Cultural Heritage Commission, you're going to be someone, Cultural Affairs Commission, who is going to support us. And as Eric said, tell us when we're doing things right, and tell us when we're doing things wrong. So look forward to working with you again, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Other members? Johnny, just want you to know, look, he's talking into my ear here to make sure I vote the right way. Seeing other members wishing to be recognized, Mr. Clerk, would you?
All people get down and support Johnny Grant, stand up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll on the confirmation? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Fourth with, please.
May I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
Please. The words I've heard here this morning have recharged the batteries in my pacemaker, and I am motivated, I'm ready to go not only to serve on the Cultural Heritage Commission, but my friends, you have the loudest cheerleader in town on a campaign to keep the great city of Los Angeles united. I want to serve the whole city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for serving.
And I certainly want to thank Mrs. Reese, we've already had a meeting, she has some great ideas. There she is, right there. We've already had a meeting, and we have some great ideas, and she's quite a showman. She's got some great ideas, and we're going to have a great time working to keep the heritage and culture of this city and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Johnny.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 34 is a communication from the mayor, and it's the appointment of members to the Workforce Investment Board.
Item 34 now before us, I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on item 34, shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item 34? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Thirty-three and thirty-four, forthwith, please.
Mr. President, item number one on the agenda is an item notice for public hearing.
And I do have cards on item number one, let's call that special.
Items numbers two through 23 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number two, a motion is required, and as much as there's two reports on one file, I believe that both reports may be adopted.
Okay, items two through 23 now before us, public hearings haven't been held in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Members wishing to call any specials? Item two, called special by Mr. Holden. And item number five, called special by Mr. Holden.
Number seven.
Item number seven, called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Items two through 23, Mr. Zine. Any specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are approved, forthwith on number 12, please.
On number 22, please.
And number 22. Next item.
Mr. President, action commencing with the new fiscal year, items numbers 24 through 32, public hearings have been held on these items.
Items 24 through 32 now before us, members wishing to call any specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items numbers 35 through 57 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number 42, a motion is required, and item number 49, a motion is required.
Okay, members without objection, we shall consider these items. Items 33 and 34 have been acted upon, items 42 and 49, I do have speaker cards, let's call those special. Forty-seven called special by Mr. Labange. Item number 56, Mr. Burnson desires a presentation. Any other specials? Yes, called special for you, Mr. Labange. Any other specials? Fifty-four, called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? Seeing no other specials, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items numbers 58 through 63 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on those items, we shall deem the public hearings open and closed, and without objection, members, item 58 through 63 are before us, any specials? Mr. Holden? Fifty-eight and 59 called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, item number 64 is a closed session item, do you wish that to remain on the desk?
Let's hold 64 on the desk, and as we return to items called special, Mr. Burnson has requested item 56 be taken out of order, members without objection. Mr. Burnson, do you wish to call some speakers forward?
Yes, members of the council, item 60, 56 is an item relating to the city of Los Angeles Police Department, which currently contracts with MTA to provide transit security on the red line and bus lines within the city of Los Angeles. There's a number of issues that are still outstanding, and there's negotiations that'll be going on, but there are four. But there are four basic tenants to our motion. And that is that the city council, with the concurrence of the mayor, communicate to MTA that a reduction in uniform officers does not respond to today's urgent need for increased public safety in the city. That the LAPD continue dialogue with the Sheriff's Department to ensure proposals respect existing jurisdictional boundaries. And that LAPD continue discussions with MTA and provide security services in a decentralized manner to the greatest extent possible and assist MTA in developing a mutually beneficial security service contract. And to support for additional, for the addition of a security chief at MTA in the examination of a capital program on MTA's transit system. And I believe we have John Cato, who is here, who is the Assistant Executive Director at MTA, and he would like to address the council relative to the MTA's concerns about the security system.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. I'm John Cato, the Deputy CEO for the Metropolitan Transportation Authority. The MTA is seeking the highest possible level of security for its customers as well as its employees. The relationship we've had for the past five years with the LAPD and the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department has resulted in the MTA's buses and rail system being the safest place to be in the county of Los Angeles. As we move forward over the next five years, we're seeking to develop a system that brings a higher level of security to our customers and to our employees. We fundamentally believe that MTA bus riders and rail riders have the same basic right and the same basic level of law enforcement as motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians within the county and within the City of Los Angeles. While we support the spirit of this motion, we do have some disagreements on the mixture of law enforcement officers versus citizen fare inspectors, as well as other aspects of how we deploy the resources. But the MTA just wants to ensure this council that we intend to take a policy direction to our board that will provide for the highest level of security to our customers and expanded securities. The disagreement is whether or not that's law enforcement officers or civilian employees providing fare inspection. Thank you, Mr. President and council.
Mr. Burton?
Yes, is Brian Williams here? Is he outside? Is Brian present? Here you are, Brian. Please come up and say a few words to, you may want to answer a few questions also. Basically, members of the council, there are some issues that are under discussion between the city and between MTA relative to how the security system is deployed. Those are being worked on. And Brian, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the direction of the mayor, the mayor's office, along with members of the CLA and other interested parties, including the LAPD, have been working with the MTA on their upcoming security plan. We have three major concerns with these plans, and we intend to continue to work with the MTA to alleviate those concerns. Number one, it is our belief that we ought to provide the best possible security to the system in light of the current era in which we live. We don't believe that that best possible security will include the increase of fare checkers nor a decrease in the police officer presence on the system. We think it will include an increase in the number of police officers. Secondly, there is a philosophical issue that we'll have to deal with, which is not terminal to the MTA plan, but something that we ought to look at. And that is whether or not the LAPD officers should be divided amongst the sectors in the new sector system that they have among the MTA. And finally, there is a budgetary issue. There is a concern here that the number of officers that are deployed to the MTA may be drastically reduced in this future program. If that is the case, that will represent a decrease in the amount of income from the MTA to the city, which will ultimately affect our budget. These are all three issues are very important issues. We're continuing to work with the MTA with Mr. Cato, Mr. Snowball, and also with the LAPD to ensure that we are able to solve these issues by the time that this budget comes before the MTA board, I believe, which will be in July and again in November. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, I have really nothing to add, except I want the council to recognize and congratulate another Ball Heights boy, Mr. Burton, for being now the chair of the MTA board. Congratulations, Mr. Burton.
Mr. Holden.
We're not reducing the number of officers on MTA, is that correct? Just to reiterate if that's the case.
There is the possibility that the number of uniformed officers may be reduced.
Why?
That's a question that probably Mr. Cato should answer.
Well, if somebody was supposed to answer it, answer it. Are they here? Hold my time, President. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember, what we're proposing currently, law enforcement officers from the LAPD and also the Sheriff's Department do fare checks.
You do what?
Fare checks, ticket checks.
Yeah, okay.
Fare inspection. We believe that there is a better use of law enforcement than the check to see if someone is paying a fare. We believe that can be done by civilian fare checkers, just like we do on our buses. The driver is the one who determines whether or not the fare is paid. We feel that it's a better deployment of resources that we use civilian checkers, that we expand the number of people in our rail system and bus system for security, but it reduces the law enforcement aspect of it.
Would they be in uniform?
The fare inspectors will wear uniforms, but not uniforms like police officers, blazers and ties, because they will provide more than just fare inspection. They will provide customer service, information on the bus routes and the rail systems to help our customers negotiate the transit system within the county.
Then how would this impact on the amounts of monies that's supposed to be, that we have anticipated when we signed this contract with MGA, that would be coming to the city to offset the costs that we will incur?
Well, the proposals that were asking that the LAPD and the LASD give us a proposal on, really, the policy directions, depending upon the magnitude of the submissions from the LAPD, will either increase or decrease the amount of monies MTA pays. One example, currently, the green line and blue line is patrolled by the Sheriff's Department. Both of those lines, segments of them, operate within the City of Los Angeles. If the LAPD wished to, they could bid for those lines. While the numbers of officers under our proposal would not increase the number of officers LAPD have assigned to us, it would allow for a smaller impact on the budgetary concerns of the city.
And what about the gold line? Who's going to do that one?
The same issue. That's an option, but that begins in July 3, '03, rather, July of next year. They have the option of bidding for that line.
Well, it appears to me that MTA is flip-flopping on the City of Los Angeles. When we had the agreement, when Mayor Reid was here, the agreement was that we would assume the responsibility of protecting the ridership on the MTA, not just on the buses and not just on the transit line, but where the corridors are. We would increase police service because there were problems associated with that kind of transportation, and MTA was required to provide safety and security at its maximum. And we had an agreement where we would take on those police officers that you had, incorporate them in the LAPD, and you would sign a contract for us to provide the service. And now you're coming with a scheme where you're going to reduce the amounts of money that would affect our general fund. We got a bid on it. You got a bid in competition with the Sheriff's Department. You got a bid in competition with maybe Pasadena Police Department. And that's, that's the likelihood. To me, I kind of predicted something like this would happen then, and it's, it's happening. Where MTA satisfied that they're safe and secure for the riders. Now you can say, well, if the LAPD don't bid and they don't get the job, we offered it to you. We can blame the LAPD if somebody got robbed. We can blame the LAPD if somebody got mugged. But not the fact that you cut the budget to LAPD. Not the fact that you have fewer police officers on the job. You're saying you need fewer police officers? And when that individual there who collected tickets and provided other public service, customer service, is not providing safety and security because some R8 person will know the difference between the two? Then you're going to blame the LAPD because LAPD is the one that's providing safety and security? But why weren't they there? They were not there because you cut the budget. You took away their resources. And we're not going to take the blame. And the reason why I make this statement, because we are on television. We do record these meetings. And we want the public to know that when problems began to happen on MTA, blame MTA and not the City of Los Angeles. Blame MTA and not the Los Angeles Police Department. Because you're cutting back on the resources, asking us to bid on this. You know what we've done over the years? We've given you almost everything we had. We took a cut.
Mr. Holden?
It's a shortfall. Thank you, Mr. President. I just had to get that out.
Well, thank you for getting that out. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. Mr. Cato, as you know, one of the key strategies of having rail lines, like the gold line and the future east side line, and the ones that we exist, that currently exist, it allows us to have more people condensed around the stations. And it's a proven fact that when you have a uniformed officer, the presence alone is a deterrent. And when you have uniformed officers going through the cars, that in and of itself is a deterrent. The objective here, as you all know, and I don't mean to be condescending in any way, but is to increase ridership. And to increase that level of confidence so that we can get from point A to point B, knowing that you're secure and safe, that you can take your children inside the rail car, that a senior can travel and not be in any way harassed or treated with respect, if the bad guys know that uniformed officers are going to be coming around. Just as important is the sense of security around the rail stations. Now, it just puzzles me why we would want to eliminate that presence, why we would want to hide it, knowing that the uniformed officer is there to maintain that level of security and promote that sense of assurance that riding the rail line, connecting with the bus lines, is a great alternative to the automobile. So why we would take that away, I don't understand. And the value of, of having that security, it's hard to put a dollar figure to it, when in fact, what we need to do is meet our objectives, make sure that our transit land use policies, our jobs housing balance, all these policies, all these catchphrases that we have in the planning discipline are, become real. But security, a sense of place, a sense of being able to get there without getting into harm's way, is profound. And a uniformed officer offers that. They are a deterrent. And I just would hope that we really understand what we're doing, because we're going into neighborhoods that right now don't have the required officers, right now don't have a sense of confidence, because we do not have the person power as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Mr. Cato, the crime stats on the lines, how do those compare to this year, last year, and the year before?
We have very low crime on our buses as well as the rail lines. Extremely low.
And I know that competition plays a factor when the Sheriff's Department wants to provide services to the San Fernando Valley. They've taken over the Community College District. And I know that they're looking to take over the MTA lines. LAPD has the responsibility to provide police service to the people of Los Angeles. I travel in other parts of the country, and I notice that when you go onto, not a bus, but a light rail or a subway, we seem to encourage people to get on without paying a fee. We don't have a gate where you have to put the money in to have the bar come up. We just let them on. And I'm curious, how many do we find are not paying the fare?
If I may respond to two components of that. First of all, the fare evasion rate that's been determined by the LAPD, LASD, as well as our own staff, is less than 5%. But the second issue, you're absolutely right. The LA Metro red line is the only major subway system in the country that does not have a barrier. One of the recommendations we're making to our Board of Directors is that we pursue putting barriers within the red line to add a higher degree of security and other capital improvements to expand security. This is not cutting back on security. And in fact, we see it as an expansion of security. The difference is the philosophical belief that we have, that you do not need a law enforcement officer to ask someone if you pay your fare, that that can be done by civilian fare inspectors. We do not wish to reduce, we do not wish the presence of law enforcement to be within the subway, the light rail systems, or our buses. And that's the reason why we contract services, because we want a level of law enforcement that's up and above what we would normally expect for any citizen in Los Angeles or Los Angeles County. The issue is the difference of whether or not you need an officer to do fair inspection. That's really the fundamental difference here.
And then the cost factor, the sheriff's bid, the LAPD bid?
We have never received any bids from LAPD or the sheriff. We have been in discussions with both organizations, as well as Pasadena. We're asking the board, our Board of Directors on the 18th, to give us policy direction. And the policy direction is, do you support the concept of civilian fare inspectors policing by the sector concept or community policing? Increase in capital equipment, like the barrier system and cameras, and other equipment at our facilities? At that time, we enter into negotiations with LAPD and LASD, and an interest has been expressed by Pasadena on the gold line. We have not negotiated or begun any discussions on costs, even though there's been some talk from both organizations about their budgets and about the abilities to give you different costs on officers. We have not begun that process yet. Right now, we're just in the policy direction recommendations to our board.
On your current cost, LAPD cost versus sheriff's cost, are they similar?
They're similar. There is, there is some differences of a couple of thousand dollars between the charge per officer. It is not a significant difference in the cost per officer from LAPD and LASD. But as you get into the different levels that we're recommending to the board of deployment of civilian versus law enforcement officers, the issue becomes one of the cost of those individuals. How less are they than the law enforcement officers? And can we have more of them to enhance security? Security is not just law enforcement. Security is a presence, a presence of individuals within our facilities. And it's also a capital investment, that we have cameras and barriers that prohibit individuals from entering the system who have not paid to be there or who shouldn't be there. On top of that, on top of the basic law enforcement that every citizen receives in the city and this county, we want a higher level of law enforcement. And that's what we have contracted for in the past, and that's what we will contract for in the future. The disagreement is on the specific numbers.
Okay. I would just say that in the era of terrorism, as we have, we have transit lines which are subject to some type of intrusion. And I know, and I have great confidence in the ability of LAPD to police those lines, both the bus lines and the transit lines. I don't think there's enough of them to believe me to go around from the entire City of Los Angeles, which they have to police. And I know when the MTA dissolved their police department, which was effective in doing that, and it was merged with the LAPD and the sheriffs, et cetera, I don't know if there's any link of communication between the two agencies. And if Pasadena then comes in, it gets more and more complicated. My concern is that the transit-dependent population and the ones we're trying to get in the transit lines feels secure. And if we want to err on the side of caution, to invest in that assurance that with the resources of the LAPD or the resources of the Sheriff's Department, you have more than just the officers who are riding those lines. You've got all those resources available in the event that something would occur. And you don't have this jurisdictional conflict, which could conceivably happen in the event an incident does occur where the sheriffs respond, LAPD. I think we find that sometimes with the metro lines, where a situation occurs, you've got local jurisdiction, and you've got the metro folks. And it sometimes gets very convoluted for the people at the scene who are actually trying to sort it out. My concern, and I'm sure your concern, Mr. Cato, is that of the safety of the public that use those lines, and that to err on the side of caution and the investment... that use those lines and that to err on the side of caution and the investment in security for them. I think it's a foolish mistake to think that a civilian is gonna be checking fares and people are gonna be as cooperative with them as they are with an armed officer.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
And I've ridden the lines before, and I know, I have never been checked on the lines, and I have seldom if ever seen any security personnel. But from my view, going from here to Long Beach, I will tell you that I feel very secure on that line when I see an armed officer who is there to protect us, because the line does travel through some very dangerous parts of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Just wanted to let you all know that in my survey of people who ride and walk and ride bicycles and drive and have impacts with the City of Los Angeles, I talked to about, what do they think about Los Angeles police officers? And the most positive impression of a Los Angeles police officer is a transit officer, because they're with the people, they're standing there, they're in the subway system, they're at their portal, they're doing their job. Their most positive response that they get. Now, the MTA has a $4.2 billion investment in the subway. Is that correct, Mr. Cato?
Absolutely. That is correct.
And that also means there should be a great commitment to have the highest level of police service in the Los Angeles Police Department, provides that and integrates through the 18 miles. 18 miles or a mile off by two and a half. How many miles to no hole?
No, you're doing fine.
Oh, good. All right. Good. So you're gonna do fine too, because we want to keep the LAPD there, and we want to do what you can do to, and go back, see what the thinking was, why they had no barriers? What was the thinking? Because this, why they had no barriers in the first place?
Well, I don't want to, you know, make negative comments about my predecessors, but I think there might have been a belief that we wouldn't have the ridership and that we wouldn't have the most successful segment of the subway system in the country. Or maybe it was a capital investment standpoint. I can't answer that. I only can tell you what we're recommending going forward is that we add the barrier systems. And if I could comment, we all share the same belief. We want the safest system possible. If I had my way, there would be an LA police officer on every train, at every station, 24 hours a day. And there would be an LA police officer on every corner within our city. However, the reality is, the MTA's budget is not that large, in spite of what people might think. So we need to look at a system that provides a level of security that's way above just the basic expectations. And we believe the policy direction that we're taking to our Board will accomplish that. It is not a criticism of LAPD. You have done an outstanding job over the five years.
But the thing is, if you don't have that presence, if you don't have what my colleagues spoke about, you're gonna lose something. And I talk to people all the time. That's my job, to talk, to listen, and to act. And some people even haven't experienced the subway because they're fearful of it. But then you talk to people and see that security, see a very recognized uniform, see a very recognized response. They appreciate that. I need to know from Commander Hanson, what are the roles and responsibilities of the LAPD in this area?
Thank you, Councilman. I'm Commander Bob Hanson, the commanding officer of Transit Group. And I hear over and over again, and I kind of bite my tongue, that all LAPD does is check tickets. And that is not the case. That is, like saying a traffic officer, all they do is write citations. The LA Police Department in the system, in the bus system and the transit system performs a wide variety of duties. Some of those involve fare checks. That is the entry level into talking to people. We pull all kinds of people out of the system. Last year, we made about 1,300 arrests out of the red line for a variety of different offenses. We are pretty picky. We don't allow people to do a lot of things down there. We want the system to remain pristine. I won't go into the numbers of people we have in the system on television, but I can say in last fiscal year, we were cut by about 6% back in the middle of 2001. I know we have, without a doubt, probably the lowest crime rate of any major transit system in the country, and Mr. Cato has alluded to that. However, in comparing the year 2001 with 2000, on the bus side, crime went up 61%. In the rail system, it went up over 200%. And this year, violent crime continues to rise somewhat in the red line, but we seem to have a handle on crime now on the bus and the rail system. Now, I can't say this is attributable solely to the losing the positions that we lost, but it certainly didn't help. I think by removing additional officers from the transit security in this city is only going to exacerbate this problem. The MTA has long proffered that it has paid more for security than anybody else in the country. And they did a masterful job in convincing the MTA Board of that. And that is clearly not the case. New York City is considered the number one transit agency in the country. I believe LA is probably number two. New York City pays twice as much for security as LA does, and it has less safety in its system than LA does. I just have to reiterate that the crime problems concerning ridership is up enormously. From 2000, there were about 25 million boardings on the rail system. In 2001, it went up to 40 million, and it's on the rise. Both bus and rail are continuing.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, basically, members of the council, what you've heard is the MTA's position, which is hire an MTA security chief to oversee MTA's security program. Nobody argues with that. Number four is to establish a capital program to increase physical security on the transit system. Nobody argues with that. The second and third ones are things that are to be negotiated, and I will give you what is in my motion, is the city's response. The other two from MTA, reduce the total number of uniformed officers, replace them with civilian fare inspectors. That's the crux, or part of the crux of it, because of the fact that we feel security is important. And I don't have a problem with replacing them with fare inspectors. I frankly think that the police officers ought to be doing security, and we could use civilian fare inspectors to check tickets and so forth. I think that's work that could be done by civilians. We need the police officers to deal with this increasing crime problem. I had no idea it was that strong of an increase, by the way. That's really astounding. 200% on rail?
Just on the rail, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So the third one that they asked for is reorganize the MTA's security program based on MTA's new service sectors. That's a problem because of jurisdictional problems and things that we have in our consent decree that would need to be addressed before something like that could be done. So those are things that are open to discussion. What is before us today is the city's position, that the city council, with the concurrence of the mayor, communicate to MTA that a reduction in uniform officers does not respond to today's urgent need for increased public safety in the city. That the LAPD continue dialogue with the LA Sheriff's Department to ensure that proposals respect existing jurisdictional boundaries. I think both sides would agree to that. Further move that the LAPD continue discussions with the MTA and provide security services in a decentralized manner to the greatest extent possible, and assist MTA in developing a mutually beneficial security service contract, which is up for negotiation now. I further move that the support for the addition of a security chief at MTA and the examination of a capital program on MTA's transit system. I think everybody agrees to those two things. So really, what's up for negotiation is the number of officers and how the deployment and how the jurisdictional sides work out. I might, I just might add that, you know, you've got the city council on one side, you've got the Board of Supervisors on the other side, and even though the Board of MTA will make the decision on the contract, you have five supervisors and four city council representatives, including myself and the mayor. Nine out of 13, so you can be assured that this isn't gonna be something that's gonna be a rollover because the executive, new executive director of MTA wants it. Now, there are some room for improvements. I agree. I totally agree there are some room for some improvements in the system. But those can be negotiated and worked out, and whatever happens, it should not be done over a cutoff at budget time on both sides. Anything that happens has to be done on a gradual basis. And I think that we get the leaders of the groups together, which we're going to do very shortly, these things will be ironed out. So I'm really asking for an approval of the city's position, and the mayor concurs on the motion that I made, and I believe the police department does also, and I believe the council concurs with the request of the city's position. So I would ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Burnson, where'd you come up with those ideas in terms of amendment? I'm asking you.
What's that?
Where'd you arrive at those, the amendments that you're not suggesting?
They're part of the motion, Mr. Holden. There are suggestions that have been made by the department, the mayor's office, myself in conference with each other. And those, are you asking where MTA came up with them?
Yeah, yeah.
MTA, those come from the CEO, not from the Board, not from me. Those are requests of the position of Mr. Snowball. They have yet to meet the approval of the full Board. So, you know, this is definitely a process in motion of the contract negotiations.
So you're gonna negotiate the terms and conditions that we're presenting to MTA today? Is that the idea?
My understanding of this motion is that you, it goes to our Board of Directors, and it makes the recommendations that we follow the four points that Councilmember Burnson brought out. That is a policy direct decision from our Board. When our Board makes a policy decision, then we will meet with both organizations and negotiate a contract.
Both, which, both organizations?
The two organizations that we currently contract with, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and the Los Angeles Police Department.
All right. So what role did the Los Angeles Police Department play in this recommendation by Mr. Burnson? Or is the Police Department involved in it at all?
I have had meetings with Councilman Burnson and his staff, several conversations. We've had input into this motion, and the Chief of Police is aware of the motion and supports it.
I see. So there's no need for MTA to come back to you if they sign off on it?
Well, there's a lot of work to be done. This is, I think, advisory to the MTA in the form of this motion. The MTA, I suspect, and the LAPD will have several meetings from this point on. A crucial, the crucial meeting is the MTA Board to solidify policy issues on July 18th.
All right. My next question is that when MTA finally decide which way to go, will the decision that they come to come back to the council for its consideration? Well, will we have to sign off on it?
I'm not absolutely sure of the procedures of the city, but I would imagine that any contract would have to come back in front of this council.
Well, I would hope so, because, once again, we're talking about public safety, and we're also giving notice to the public that crime is going up, not just in the community. But you don't read about that in the paper nowadays in the past couple of months. It's, William, that crime is going up. But it is. And the public can feel the pressure of the criminal, and the criminal acts is being committed against the law-abiding citizens. Public is aware. Don't think they're not, even though they're not saying anything. Fact of the matter is that if it's going up in transportation, they won't ride the bus. They won't take the train. And if it's going up there, and you're talking about cutting back on public safety as we now know it, and we've come to accept it, and the mayor's office is gonna sign off on this too? Is that what I hear you saying?
Again, this is a response to some information that we received from the MTA.
I understand. Are you signing off on this as we speak?
Yes, yes, we are.
On the reduction of law enforcement uniform officers?
No, 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 no. We are in objection to that.
You're objecting to the reduction?
Yes.
Well, I support the mayor's position.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And how is MTA gonna respond to this?
Mr. Councilmember, we have made our position clear that we think there needs to be a mixture.
All right, all right. Then we're not gonna come to any agreement. Let me just say, Mr. President, I'm gonna support the mayor and the Police Department. We should not, if their position is not to have any reduction in uniform officers at all. Mr. President, members, they got a budget shortfall. They made some stupid mistakes over there. And the Bus Riders Union, when they filed a lawsuit against them and they caved in, and they had a shortfall, they had to go out and buy all these buses and couldn't get anybody to operate them. They've been making some bad decisions for a long time over there, Mr. President. And so we cannot carry, make up the shortfall, we in the city. These taxpayers, not with my vote. We're gonna make up the shortfall for the increase in ridership required by law to do that, because the judge did order you that in that lawsuit. And you, there's some other mismanagements that are taking place over there, Mr. President, members. The barrier-free system, the barrier-free system by that Board of, LACTC, Jack and all of them, and I told them no not to do it. That's not the only thing they did that was stupid. They put the blue line at grade level rather than above or below grade level, and you know how many people were killed there. They had an option at that time to do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Once again, I told you so, and I'm gonna tell you so again.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
They did the wrong thing then, the barrier free. They didn't go below or above grade, and now they're gonna come up with less public safety. What do you think about that, Mr. President? Isn't that bad?
I think I recognize Mr. Garcetti.
I'd like to move the previous question, please.
Previous question has been moved. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. That ends discussion. We have Mr. Burnson's motion before us, members. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next time.
Mr. President, item number one is item notice for public hearing. There is a member of the public who wishes to be heard.
Item number one now before us. Council calls for it at this time, Mr. John Hong, followed by Rex Frankel, Craig Sherman, and Dale Neal.
Members of the council, I'm John Hong, and I represent Healthcare Realty Services, which is the landlord of the Kurland Job Medical Office Building. And I've been sent here to ask the question of how this amendment may, or what economic impact this amendment may have on the association that the Kurland Job Office Building is part And if there's not the, you know, if the information isn't available now to respond to this question, then I just wanted to make this question reflect on the record.
Okay. We're gonna hear from all the public speakers first, and then I'm sure there's gonna be some sort of staff presentation here.
Okay.
Rex Frankel is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. I represent the Biona Ecosystem Education Project, the Coalition of Concerned Communities, and Rare Earth Network, who are challenging the approval of this development agreement amendment today. What you are hearing today basically is a gift of public funds. This, even though the applicant is trying to tell you that this is a non-substantive issue, that this is merely technical, in reality, this is merely being done to circumvent a court decision by Judge, Honorable Judge Disinterjanis, last year, Superior Court Judge, ordering the developer to pay $5 million in traffic impact fees to the city. The development agreement has expressly waived their ability, the development agreement agreed to by the Hughes Center developer, which is what this is about. They've waived their ability to have the entertainment center benefit from previously paid traffic fees, paid by the Hughes Center's office development a number of years ago. The Department of Transportation has always agreed with us that traffic fees are owed because the project is not originally included in the development agreement. It is a new development that was enacted in 1998. The development agreement was enacted in 1986 and never included the Hughes Entertainment Center, which is the project that the applicant seeks to exempt from traffic fees today. Because these fees are due and payable now, they can't, council cannot retroactively exempt this developer from paying $5 million owed to the city. This is a gift of public funds. A gift of public funds is defined as money given to a private corporation when the public gets nothing in return that they don't already have today. Snyder Company and Arden Realty, the applicants, want to acquire traffic impact credits from another development, the Hughes Center, which is forbidden by that developer's own agreement with the city from transferring these credits to a development which is different than that in the original 1986 development agreement. So please, do not approve this amendment today. This is significant, this is a major change, this is giving away $5 million of our dollars. Lastly, I am submitting Planning Department letters dated August 13, 1998, and June 9, 1999, which explain that today's action violates the California Environmental Quality Act because this application is also adding in 250,000 square feet of commercial space without analyzing the environmental impacts of this upzoning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Craig Sherman, followed by Dale Neal, Todd Borzy, and we'll take further speakers at that time.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Craig Sherman. I'm attorney for Coalition of Concerned Communities and counsel for the parties that have been before the Superior Court. I'd like to reference a comment letter I had presented yesterday to council. It's been received by legislative analyst and by the clerk this morning. As mentioned prior, this is, this action is related to an ongoing lawsuit. However, the issue is, is that the action to be taken by council today, number one, is not timely within the request and order by the court. Number two, it's not responsive to the court ruling. It's not addressing the issues in that order, as well as it's not addressing all of those issues. By these statements, I'd like to incorporate by reference into the record today, all of those documents and proceedings before the court. We have the city attorney who's on the case here, Mr. Jack Brown. The city's in possession of all those records. Um, the city's in possession of all those records and files and, and are properly part of that record and are therefore incorporated by reference. But there's a, there's another issue here. There's, there's a collateral action, um, a parallel action going on with the Department of Transportation at this time that's, that's trying to address these fees, whether they're due and owing. Uh, my clients have appealed that matter and it's been sitting on a desk with the Department of Transportation. That order's being, uh, uh, ignored, and now there's coming forward with an amendment to the development agreement. Now, they're related, the staff report's silent to it, um, there's no response how these two things interact, and certainly, um, are related actions and, and it's very questionable as, as why, number one, the appeal's not being addressed, but number two, um, why there's, why the staff report and, and discussion here is silent on it. Uh, my letter, uh, presented to Council outlines the primary objections. Um, one of them, as has been mentioned, is the retroactivity, the intent to apply this development agreement, you know, back into the past in order to, to make it have some effect, prior effect, and, and that's what is, um, uh, it's an unconstitutional, um, you cannot make a, an ordinance retroactive if it, if it's unconstitutional. And what's unconstitutional here is you're giving up tax dollars that are due, and there's no new benefit, there's no public benefit, there's no new consideration for this action being taken today as part of this agreement. So, uh, that's, that's a primary objection. They're, they're more fully set forth in my, my comments and, uh, would, would implore the Council to, uh, deny this action today.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Dale Neal.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, my name is Dale Neal. I'm with Latham &amp; Watkins. I'm representing the applicants for the amendments to the Howard Hughes Center Development Agreement that are before you today. My address is 633 West Fifth Street, LA 90071. You should each have received my letter dated June 28th, in which I set forth the reasons why the proposed amendments deserve your favorable consideration. Briefly, those reasons include the fact that the proposed amendments involve mere technical amendments to conform certain provisions of the development agreement to substantive changes previously made by the City Council and the Advisory Agency to the conditions of approval of the track map applicable to Howard Hughes Center. Specifically, the technical amendments are proposed in order to, or in order that the definition and the description of the project and the phasing plan in the development agreement explicitly match the definition and description of the project and the phasing plan under the track map. No substantive changes in these definitions are before the City Council in, at this time. In addition, the technical amendments merely restate two sentences of the development agreement so that they clearly reflect their original intent and purpose to allow excess in-lu credit under the coastal transportation corridor specific plan to be reserved and credited toward transportation fees attributable to any development within Howard Hughes Center, and to prohibit excess in-lu credit from being reserved and credited toward the transportation fee payable by related developments outside of Howard Hughes Center. Finally, the technical amendments merely add language that requires the applicant to reimburse the city for the costs associated with the annual review of compliance with the development agreement. In my letter of June 28th, I also addressed claims made at the Plum Committee, hearing by, by Rex Frankel in opposition to the proposed amendments. You've heard the same claims from Mr. Frankel and his counsel today. For the reasons set forth in my letter, those claims are all without merit. In closing, I urge you to adopt the unanimous recommendation of the City Planning Commission and your Plum Committee and approve the proposed technical amendments to the Howard Hughes Center Development Agreement and adopt the ordinance to effect such amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Todd Borsey, followed by Mort Allen and Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Mr. President, members of the Council, good morning. I'm Todd Borsey, Project Manager, for the Mayor's Office of Economic Development. I'm here today to express our support for the applicant and the proposal before you. We believe this to be a technical change in the development agreement that maintains consistency with conditions of the track map. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Allen? Different item. Ms. Hawkins?
Uh, can I, uh, change on this one and speak on number 55?
Okay, we'll try to accommodate that. This concludes public comment for this item. Chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is in CD6, but on behalf of Ms. Galanter's, uh, office, uh, her staff briefed me, we do have staff here from the City Attorney's Office, the Planning Department, and the Department of Transportation. But to clarify, this is an independent action, independent from the, the court action. It is a technical correction to a reduction, uh, that was approved previously at this location of a significant reduction of what had been expected, uh, major square, uh, office, major office retail development from 2,700,000 square feet to 1,950,000 square feet. As a consequence of that, as we often know, in projects like this, there is, uh, there are traffic mitigation fees that are required. This is a technical amendment and a correction to allow the work that had been done, which did provide a freeway off-ramp that now exists, to give credit for that work done, which relieves our local streets from this traffic congestion, uh, to this project. There is still, uh, an, an additional phase of this project, which will come through its normal process, but this was reviewed by the Planning Department, the City Attorney, the Transportation Department, approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, approved unanimously by the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and, as we just heard recently, recommended by the Mayor as well. So I ask, ask for my vote.
Mr. Holden?
Uh, Mr. President, maybe the staff can answer the question about how much, were they assessing trip fees when the project was first approved? Someone come forward while you hold my time, Mr. President.
My name is Alan Rifkin from Department of Transportation. Uh, the original owner, um, of the Howard Hughes Center constructed regional, subregional improvements totaling almost $22 million. Uh, that $22 million is qualified as in-lu credit towards future, uh, developments. Uh, to date, they have, uh, only transferred $5 million of that. That leaves about $17.5 million left to transfer.
To transfer it to the city?
No, to transfer to other development on that, that major project.
Right. And in mind, and trip fees, you know what trip fees are, right?
Yes.
Based on the development, right? And the number of people that be attracted to the development site, right? And now how much money were they supposed to give to the city to offset that for mitigating traffic?
The, the, uh, the trip impact of the Arden Development, uh, was a net, uh, $6 million in which, uh, the, the, uh, the previous developer is transferring that $6 million to this project.
They, they did transfer a $6 million?
Yes.
And they, these people are asking that we give, how much you back to them? Credit?
None. These people are just asking that, that we go forward with the, uh, conditions of approval of the track map.
Well, there was some argument that, uh, paying $5 million in transportation fees developed a record to avoid paying $5 million in transportation fees. It was further stated that the proposed construction is not in compliance with the city environmental guideline. Now, that's what one person testified, and it's part of the report, part of the planning report. What, what, how you respond to that?
Uh, this project went through the environmental impact report process and, uh, actual physical mitigation measures were required, and pursuant to the coastal corridor specific plan, uh, some fees were required, but pursuant to the development agreement is allowed to transfer the fees from the previous, uh, credit for that freeway ramp to offset the $6 million worth of fees.
Right. On the freeway ramp, what portion of that money was contributed by the city, if anything at all? Was it all state?
None, it was all, all by the developer.
But what did we do in terms of spending money to, to mitigate the traffic problem, uh, for that project?
The city of Los Angeles spent zero money on this. It was all developer fees.
I know, but did we spend the money yet?
It, it was constructed.
Well, we did put in the $6 million, is what I'm saying.
It was, it was $22 million that was constructed for the freeway ramp, and that credit is...
Hasn't been spent?
Yes.
All the money's been spent?
No, I'm sorry. I'm, of the $22 million, uh, yeah, $22 million was spent, and that's a credit, and only $5 millions have been transferred.
$5 million's been what?
Transferred.
To, uh...
As credits for other developments that are coming as subsequent phases of that original development.
And when the $5 million, should it be required, what would the city do with that money?
If the city had, that money would have to be allocated to the coastal corridor specific plan. There's a list of projects that would be spent there.
But you have those projects listed?
They're listed in the ordinance, yes.
Not in my report. Are they listed? Do you know anything about them? You're transportation, I mean, you need more traffic mitigation, is that correct?
Yes.
And what would you do then? Widen the street, put in more traffic signal, put in eight, uh, AT SAC?
It would go, it would go towards more street widenings in, in the area, uh, transit in the area, uh, and AT SAC, things that are, uh, in the coastal corridor specific plan, adopted plan.
Right. Uh, Mr. President, members, I probably will just withhold, not that I'm against it, so that I can have a chance to talk to you over the next week and see, get a better understanding of what we're talking about, and if it's signed, okay, fine, I'm gonna vote aye, uh, then. But I would think that, uh, there's some questions that I need answered, and I think you know what I'm talking about. We've seen a lot of this before, uh, this traffic mitigation, I mean, look at the Grove as another example of that, where they're withholding their money on traffic mitigation, uh, because they're saying, "We're not coming up with the money," and there's a dispute, I think, is there, is there a dispute that exists between, uh, Department of Transportation and the Grove?
I'm not familiar with that, sir.
Well, we're gonna send the newspapers. So, uh, I just wanna make sure that we're not being cheated. And, uh, I, I trust you and your judgment and all that, but then if the money were to come in, and we're gonna have to widen the streets, improve the AT SAC system in the area, they'd like to know that, and that's downstream, that's a new area that Ms. Misakowski has taken over, and, uh, and I support what she's doing here, but I'm just gonna withhold today so I can have a better understanding of it for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Holden and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmembers and colleagues. I just wanna share with you that in our Plum Committee, it was reported that 70% of the project has been built out, that the changes that are before you are technical in nature, that the Councilmember then, uh, Councilmember Galanter, had strong support from the community. She was supporting it, the Mayor's obviously came forward, and now under the tutelage of Councilmember Misakowski, we can continue along that road. And I just wanted to reaffirm our positive stance, our support for this project, that we continue, uh, with this process and deal with the technical changes that are at hand. So we need to move forward, um, and I just wanted to rise in support of this project. Thank you.
Mr. Bernstein?
Move the previous question.
Okay, you are the final speaker, so that does end discussion. Uh, Mr. Clerk, I don't believe a vote is necessary. Mr. Holden, uh, wishes to withhold on this ordinance, so it will carry over for a second reading.
Well, there is the Plum Report before you, the ordinance is a part of the Plum Report.
Should we vote on the Plum Report?
You should vote.
Questions, final questions, members seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the Plum Report. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, the report is approved, and the ordinance holds over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number two, uh, a motion is required on this matter, is also an ordinance, and it was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden? Item number two.
Mr. President, members, uh, I think the staff should give us a report on who's gonna be paying for these, uh, new trash containers. He's on the report.
D. Carey with the CAO's staff.
Single family, multiple dwelling, you know, you're right to know. There was a time, the reason why I raised this, Mr. President, there was a time when we talked about raising or charging money for trash collection in this city, you had almost a revolution. What we've done is, uh, imposed this upon homeowners and caused, generated another level of ratepayers, and, uh, we've done it in a way where, uh, it's, uh, they're not that much aware of it, that it's happened to them. But you remember when Yordi and when they separated the trash, for those who've been around for a while, I'm sure you all know about that, and when the, that's one of the reasons why Bradley got elected, because, uh, Yordi was talking about, you know, fee for trash collection. I think Mr. Bernstein's aware of that as well. And the fees are going up, and the public should be given notice about what they're paying for, and that's why I asked for a staff report. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm D. Carey with the CAO's office. Uh, this item, uh, this amendment before you, this ordinance before you does two things. It specifically allows for the cost of the Automated Container Systematic Replacement Program to be paid from the sanitation equipment charge, and it changes the size of the standard green waste container from 60 gallons to 90 gallons. And that is all that this does. This enables the Automated Container Systematic Replacement Program to go forward. It was approved in the 2001-02 budget, and, um, it just, all it does is clarify the ordinance to allow for the payment of the cost of the program from the sanitation equipment charge.
Well, alright, you can move the previous question, I got more time left. The next question here is that some of the money's coming from the Community Development Department, uh, $326,000 for salary, another $125,000 is coming from General Fund for this fiscal year, I believe. Would you explain that?
Yes, Councilmember Enrique Zaldivar with the Bureau of Sanitation. We were able to get $600 and some thousand dollars from CDD. They do not cover fringe benefits. Part of the agreement on the MOU with CDD is that the, uh, the department cover those benefits, and that's, that's the money that you see on there. That applied for last fiscal year.
Well, when that was, that, that, the community development money should go for other purposes, jobs, other, other, why would, you're gonna give this money back?
No, no.
How do you qualify for, sanitation department qualifies for using that money?
The, the funds are actually used as part of the city jobs program to bring staff on for the automated, uh, the systemated container rollout program. So we actually, excuse me, got staff through the city jobs program, and this actually pays, uh, their salaries for the first, uh, six months of the program.
And are the, the fee being increased, the decrease remain the same for these trash collectors, these containers that...
There, there is no, uh, fee increase at this time as a result of this program. Uh, this is a relatively, uh, small portion of the sanitation equipment, uh, charge budget. Uh, there are additional other things in the budget. We do have a new facility being built. We have new dual-fuel infrastructure, uh, for clean fuel refuse vehicles, as well as, uh, we will be purchasing, uh, 120 new refuse collection vehicles.
Right. This is part of that $180 million trash collector program that you're implementing for the next 15 years?
This is, the containers used in this program is part of that contract that you're referring to, uh, which was the contract that was awarded for the purchase of the automated, uh, containers.
Right. And Mr., uh, Pacheco, uh, you have a report here, and I want you to know which one I'm gonna vote for, uh, from your committee, Budget and Finance. Uh, how does it differ in, what are you specifically recommending, sir?
Well, I'm not sure what the other report says, but obviously I wanna move my report. So, I'll move my report, Budget and Finance report on the matter.
Well, tell me, staff, how does it differ, if at all?
Point of order, they differ in that Budget and Finance requires a report back in six months about the distribution and what's going on with the recycling effort. Other than that, they both approve the ordinance in concert. They're, so they're the same, other than a report back.
Alright, very good. Thank you.
Ms. Rudy Thomas? Previous question has been called. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That does end discussion. We have now the matter before us. The Budget and Finance Committee has been moved. Any other questions, or, Ms. Misakowski? Point of order? Then let's open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, I have a request if we could take item 49 out of order. Uh, we have a consultant here who I'd like to make sure he makes...
Item 49, uh, we also have a request to take item number seven out of order, a DDP item. There is a Board of Department of Water Power Commissioners meeting in less than 45 minutes. So let's take item number seven. Uh, for... than forty-five minutes. So, let's take item number seven first, and then item forty-nine out of order.
For the record, Mr. President, on item number two, the environmental quality communication was received and filed.
Yes. Item number seven now before us. Mr. Holden? Let's get him off the phone. Mr. Holden, item number seven.
Yeah, hold on, item forty-nine.
Mr. Holden, if we don't have you in a few seconds, we're going to go ahead and vote on the item.
Item seven?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I said, step front and center. We, tell us why we should do that. I think just last week or so, you were in here with the Lee Andrews Group.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you were. And there were a lot of concern and interest about the Lee Andrews Group, and this doesn't differ that much, except for the fact that it's a different company. I don't see that much interest. Tell me what's so good about this, and what was so bad about the other group, if anything was bad at all?
Well, David Wiggs, Department of Water and Power, with me is Frank Solis, Chief Administrative Officer. Of course, we were in supporting the last contract, so I don't, I'm not sure what the question is. This contract has nothing to do with the last contract. The contract on the Lee Andrews Group, as we discussed, was for the work in the public benefits, and that's going forward as, on the basis that we discussed, and it was approved by the commissioners. This is an extension to an existing contract that we also discussed on last time, that will carry us through the end of September while we complete the RFP process for a new corporate public relations contract that we have on the street right now. The bids are due July tenth. So, this would give us the ability to continue with the assistance of the outside group through September till we get the new group. Plus, it does allow for us to catch up and pay for work that was done through the end of May, in fact, by the Lee Andrews Group and the Fleishman Group, where the department essentially overspent that contract.
We did.
We did.
Now, let me ask you, how did Fleishman Hiller get the contract in the first place? Did he respond to an RFP?
It was in response to an RFP, as I understand.
Three years.
I don't know if it was a one-year, an extension for one-year, two-year contract, I understand it was one-year extension.
One-year, two-year contract, and one-year extension, and you're asking for eight hundred thousand dollars that you always spent?
Well, the amount that needs to be done to repay is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would get us, the Don Andrews Group paid through May, and it would give us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month to continue this through the end of September till we can get a new contract in place and through the board, we hope by August, mid-August.
It really bothers me that just a week ago or so, they were complaining about the Lee Andrews Group, receiving a contract, and here you have Fleishman Hiller, always spent the money, managed the program, and now you've got to pay them retroactively for money spent, and then carry them through into the year. Nah, I'm just going to say, these things stand out, like a sore thumb, like fingers in my eyes. And I think that we should treat them all fairly when they come to the table. Well, I'm going to vote for it, but I just want to make the point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to make it clear that Fleishman Hiller did not overspend. That was the department's responsibility, and that we did not manage those contracts properly. We're trying to fix that now. We are fixing that. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, this is, there was a thirty-six-month contract, is that correct?
It was a one-year extension.
You've got your mic up.
It was a two-year contract with a one-year extension.
And it was clearly going to sunset at the end of that three-year period, right? And that happened last week, or just yesterday, David's clear yesterday. And so, you're here before us asking for a three-month extension, correct?
That's correct.
Which arguably, he should have seen coming and could have asked us for months ago.
Yes, yes. No question, Mr. Weiss. This is one that, and that's part of the reasons we're trying to, and we are making changes there. We did not, because of the way it's been done in the past, across the organization, there were several groups that were working independently with each of these budgets, and we didn't have central control. And accordingly, we did overspend, and we were late in getting down an RFP. I believe we will address that going forward, so I agree with you. But that wasn't our contractor's fault, that was the department's fault.
We have been trying to get a corporate communications director to oversee this. We were not successful. We're trying to do that in the next thirty days. Other speakers, Mr. Rudy Thomas, you are the final speaker. Let's open the roll on the previous question.
Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that motion passes, that ends discussion. We have the matter before us. Item number seven, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
That is approved. Fourth, please. Next item. Item number five, called special by Councilmember Holden.
We had asked for forty-nine to be taken.
Yes.
item forty-nine.
We do have cards on item number forty-nine. That is here from the public first. Council calls for Mr. Jim McQuiston, followed by Mort Allen. Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association, I rise in support of trying to get this reconsidered at LAFCO. Our East Hollywood Community Association has been engaged for many, many years with this LAFCO, a matter trying to get the boundary changed, and we were assured that we were going to be listened to by LAFCO, and then when the times came to listen, they refused, even though the mayor put in a special letter saying, "Please let East Hollywood Community Association and LAFCO, that permit that the hospital of children out of this boundary area." And the foremen of this Hollywood secession said, "We will let everybody out that wants out," and then they refused. They said, "You're in it, whether you want to or not." And so, we're very, very happy that the city is taking this matter up, and I've looked at the various matters that the city has argued in their letters, and I agree with them one hundred percent. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Mort Allen.
My statement's kind of simple. Instead of keeping on this antagonism about this, when are we going to be able to come together? I deal with the wealthiest in the valley, all the landowners, and they don't want secession, but things keep on happening. It's like, instead of going out there and saying, "This is what we're going to do to help you, this is what we're going to do, we're going to give you some meeting room, we're going to do this, we're going to do that," it's this whole thing now. Everybody had a wake-up call Sunday in the Daily News, because I didn't, I don't think most people knew. There were eighty-four separate cities in L.A. County that all seemed to be doing good, as they showed in that Almanack thing. So, it's like, I mean, one of the worst things is when we start having the area planning commissions overwhelmed, and when we have the people in the valley wanting something, and then the council overdoes it. I mean, we were promised that there wouldn't be overlapping council districts, and there is. And so, all this is fueling, the other side is sitting there. I happen to be the only anti-secession person in my area, and it's like, they're sitting back and watching all this stuff, and they're just playing on it, and it's like time to come to the table with all these people, not just close and his buddies, but the general public out there that say, "Hey, we're going to work together." I mean, I think that they need to have a council meeting in North Hollywood at the Academy of Arts out there, and let all the people with the money in the hills, and let them tell you their problems and work it out.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. He closes the public comment for this item. Ms. Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't believe this is being antagonistic. This is following in a consistent pattern, where the city of Los Angeles, under the rules that LAFCO set forth, has the right and the responsibility to request LAFCO to look at new information, further information that is being presented by our consultants, showing that we think there has been a fault or failure in their analysis. It is part of the process that LAFCO set forth, and I think we should again consistently act on it. What you have before you is a report from the CAO. The subtext is a report from our analyst, our consultant, who's looking at this with an objective set of eyes and review our fiscal report, as well as a letter from the city attorney in the passing of the resolution, which is requested. To ask LAFCO to look at this again, that is the process that LAFCO is presenting. There is a date limit, and I would like to briefly address the issue before the council.
Thank you. Mr. President, Councilman Sikowski, and members of the council, Fred Marken. We're here before you with regard to the proposed request for reconsideration by LAFCO of the resolution that LAFCO adopted on Hollywood secession. But before you, it's very similar to the reconsideration matter that you acted on with the guard to the San Fernando Valley. Essentially, what we're saying to LAFCO is that the resolution that LAFCO adopted on June the fifth needs to be reconsidered and rejected in its current form, possibly amended. And so, what we would be presenting to LAFCO is a request for reconsideration along those lines. The chief issue we intend to present to LAFCO, how they calculated what is known as the mitigation payment, this is the payment required by state law to redress this imbalance that would be caused by Hollywood secession between the revenues lost by the city of Los Angeles and the expenditures in the water that have to be made by the city of Los Angeles. LAFCO has not probably calculated that payment, and we will be presenting to LAFCO not only the correct methodology, which we've talked to them about before, but the results of our independent consultants' work on doing the calculation correctly. So, with that, Mr. President, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our CAO, Mr. Fujioka.
We have a report that we're, you know, before you, where we're asking your authority to release the executive officer of LAFCO that addresses our concerns. The first part of the report deals with five issues that we feel must be highlighted. The first issue addresses the inadequate time for public input from the residents of the proposed Hollywood City. As you know, that unlike the valley and the harbor areas, which had up to two to three years for the residents to study, but more importantly, provide input on this issue of secession. The Hollywood secession proposal was, we feel, rushed through the process. There was examples or instances where the residents of the proposed new city had literally only a couple of hours to review the LAFCO proposal, and with that provides some input and even lacking some meaningful input. The other issues related to the street lighting headquarters, some of you may or may not know that the headquarters for our Department of Street Lighting, our Bureau of Street Lighting, is in the proposed boundary for the new Hollywood City. If this proposal goes through without any changes, the city will be forced to move that headquarters to a different location, and the current resolution does not provide any fund, does not provide any, does not address the fiscal impact related to that change. There are also, without getting into painful detail, some issues related to public safety for the police and fire departments, and also for planning and transportation. The last part of this report deals with, provides information that we submitted in our response to the Valley Resolution, where we took strong exception to some of the comments made by the executive officer of LAFCO, where he said the city was not responsible. And we also took strong exceptions to the methodology used by LAFCO determining the fiscal impact, not only on the remaining city, but also on the proposed city. With that, I'd ask if you have any questions, then I can provide some more detail.
All right. Any other member of the staff wishing to be heard at this point? Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, staff, for being here as well. I want to start with a little speech and then some questions. One, what Mr. Allen was talking about, I take that to heart. I think that all of us as representatives, we both protect and serve, like LAPD model, and we serve by making service better in Hollywood, which was why in today's L.A. Times poll, only one out of ten people thought that Hollywood wasn't being treated well by the city. And that one out of ten is too much for me as a representative of Hollywood, and I want to get that down to zero out of ten. But nine out of ten feel like that is happening, that we're on the right track and that we're engaging there. But we also have to protect those areas and be honest with the people who elected us, the people who chose these things in a detailed way to let them know when there's something that could harm them. And I think that that's what we're talking about here today. And as Councilmember Sikowski said, we are playing by the rules here. It's a beautiful part of the democratic process to be able to engage. Sometimes our opponents are saying, "What are you afraid of?" We're not afraid of anything. I look forward to putting this on the ballot, especially when you see in Hollywood that sixty-one percent of people who oppose secession, and only twenty-five percent of people who are for it, that one out of three people in the secession area in that same poll were horrified when they're in the secession area. You know, when we do a park in Hollywood, we probably have two dozen public meetings, and we take that out into the community. When we're talking about ripping away Hollywood from the city of Los Angeles permanently, we have one, one meeting. That seems to be rather undemocratic. If that's a preview of coming attractions of what this city is going to be like, then I think we all have something to fear. This reminds me a bit of a car chase. Sometimes LAFCO is criticized for being glacial in its pace. Well, this was like a car chase, and we're left to pick up the pieces afterwards. We're following this, and who knows what wreckage is coming behind, but it's moved so quickly to the ballot that we don't even have some of the most basic details answered here. And to use a Hollywood analogy, it feels like this blockbuster that we heard about is turning into a big flood. But that said, I want to ask a couple of questions. Can you please detail, if you can hold the balance of my time, detail for us. First and foremost, I'm very concerned with public safety. Can you tell me about the, I know this was a concern of Supervisor Yaroslavsky, who lives close by as well. It's been a concern of Councilmember Weiss, who would be representing an area that is an island and would be cut off from our fire and police services. Can you tell me what the impact and what we think has been overlooked in the LAFCO report in terms of the fire service and perhaps the police service in Hollywood, the remaining city of Los Angeles?
The location of the current fire stations, which now serve Hollywood and the surrounding areas, we feel would have to be moved to avoid a degradation in emergency response time if the new city chooses to take over its own fire service. Right now, we have fire stations that are extremely close to the proposed city borders. And as a consequence, if the Hollywood City takes over those stations, which has been proposed at one point in time, then the residents of the remaining city who live in proximity to those stations would have to rely on other fire stations for their emergency fire services. Most importantly, their paramedic services, that would add to the response time. And with that, would, I think, would degrade the quality of the fire service and most importantly, the paramedic service for the residents of those areas. Now, we've heard that the Hollywood secessions have said, "No problem. We'll just keep LA City Fire as a fire service." As we stated during our presentation on the Valley Resolution, the individuals working on Hollywood's secession today do not have the authority to make any commitment whatsoever. They do not have the legal authority. Only the elected officials of that city have that authority, and those individuals do not have it right now. So, there's nothing that prevents, within a very, very short timeframe, for the elected officials of the new city to drop LA City Fire and to take on another fire service, even create their own fire service, which would have an absolute impact on our remaining citizens. Another issue that the Griffith Park Hillside areas, north and west of Hollywood, would have absolutely be impacted because of the transfer of services between the new city and the, I'm sorry, the remaining city and the new city. With respect to police, the same issue in some respects also exists. We understand that there's been talk, again, by individuals who do not have the legal authority to make this commitment, of using LA County Sheriff to provide law enforcement services in the proposed city.
This is the same sheriff that's just had to release some folks out of jail because of budget problems?
Yes, and the same sheriff that I understand has put an absolute freeze.
Mr. Garcetti, may I ask that you restrain yourself? Thank you.
We understand that, I personally talked to the sheriff. We understand that, I personally talked to the sheriff last week during another meeting. He mentioned to me, and I was surprised to hear this, that they have a hiring freeze as a consequence of their, on all law enforcement positions, deputy sheriff positions, as a consequence of their budgetary problems. And this is the agency that the Hollywood secessions have proposed contracting with for public safety. And I know they have a number of vacancies, and I would question how they'd be able to fill positions to take on a city the size of Hollywood. And then, God help them, they try to take on a city the size of the proposed Valley city, but that's a different issue. But anyway, in our report, we say if the... What you have is you have a situation, we have some maps if you want us to highlight it, but very briefly, you would have a situation right now where a new city would be bounded by the, I'm sorry, the remaining city of Los Angeles immediately northwest of the new Hollywood city, would also be founded by West Hollywood, the New Valley City, and the New Hollywood City, which would virtually put a portion of our remaining city as an island, create a little island. And so we would have to either bring law enforcement staff from another station, which would again increase response times, increase, decrease the quality of our services, or we would be forced to ensure that we have that kind of response time, the potentially contract with LA County Sheriff's Department. And I think that alone is an outrageous proposal.
And don't get me wrong, I'm one of the biggest fans of our sheriff. I think Libaca's done a great job. It's just, we should be clear about what their budget troubles are right now. Second question, I have one more following this, is could you tell us the impact on planning and transportation, what things look like? I know one of the biggest concerns for folks in Hollywood is traffic and also land use. Certainly, there's been great strides made in some of the development in the area, but we're working very hard, Tom Labange and myself, in cleaning up some of the intersections of traffic. What sort of impact has the LAFCO study overlooked?
LAFCO has decided to create boundaries that clearly go down the middle of the street. So if the new city is created in Hollywood City, half of the street would be, mitad de la calle, estará la responsabilidad de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Whereas the other half will be the responsibility of the new Hollywood City. That would create some very, very significant street-related issues such as simple things of road repairs, the timing of signals, median island maintenance, sewer and storm drain construction, trash collection, coordination of special events, handling of traffic down that street. Some of the, trying to coordinate the shared cost responsibilities. You also have a very significant planning issue, evidenced by what we've already seen on Santa Monica Boulevard, in our city, Santa Monica Boulevard is a very, very wide street. When you get to Beverly Hills, all of a sudden it narrows, and right there you have significant traffic problems, and you leave Beverly Hills and widens again, because it becomes part of the, the city of Los Angeles again. That is a very fundamental regional planning or urban planning issue that would impact the city unless the proposed resolution is changed, unless it's addressed by LAFCO.
All right, Mr. Garciello, then we got here from Mr. Holden, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Reyes in that order. One other concern that I have that's not in the report is representation, especially for ethnic minority communities. The thirteenth district, which has about eighty percent of the Latinos that live in Hollywood, are currently in a district that's sixty-two percent Latino, where Latinos are a plurality of the voters, overwhelmingly a plurality, and are able to elect a Latino representative. I know that the Hollywood vote people have met with Maldef, which had strong concern, and they're looking at implementing something two years down the line, perhaps, where they have seven representatives, and then the potential for making sure there's a Latino representative would be there. But in the meantime, there's a two-year gap there. Is that something that's also a concern, especially for Latino voters in Hollywood or residents in terms of the Representation and Voting Rights Act concerns that we had to deal with just recently in re-districting?
We haven't addressed that issue in our report.
Are you asking that it be addressed? If we could address that as well and include that, that would be helpful. And just lastly, in closing, I think we are looking forward to this being on the ballot. And I'm looking forward to continuing to bring services to Hollywood, make them even better each and every single day. We're saying our message here is very clear. Put it on the ballot, but don't thumb your nose at the voters when you do so. Make sure you do it with the same sort of reflection and detail that has gone into some of the previous reflections on other areas and that we do, when doing the most basic service delivery in these areas. We owe that to the voters to treat them intelligently and to give them the time to be able to look at all the facts.
Pues tenemos a los votantes con inteligencia, les daremos tiempo a ellos para que repasen todos los ejerces, gracias. Disculpe, señor presidente. No dije que también tenemos nuestro asesor aquí, está a punto de finalizar el reporte, reporte, que incluirá el pago y la manera de cuando de ese pago, ustedes saben que hace poco completamos nuestra respuesta, la resolución dejada, y ha tenido muy poco tiempo para finalizar su reporte, por hecho, no ven los finales y con parte de acción de lo que estamos pidiendo, su autoridad, unanimemente, para... Está ese reporte, pero hay alguien en esta reunión que le gustaría escuchar varios comentarios de Gama.
Thank you very much for that information, Mr. Fugioca. The chair now recognizes Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Reyes.
Señor Reyes.
Mr. Holden passes. Mr. Holden, Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes. You want to pass, Mr. Holden, or you want to be heard?
This is item forty-nine. LAFCO, oh yeah. You know, when this similar matter was before us related to the Valley, and then you got the cost of the vote for it. Did you take the message to LAFCO?
Llevaron el mensaje a LAFCO.
We did file requests with LAFCO.
Si, presentamos una petición con LAFCO, ¿qué ocurrió?
There's a hearing set for this coming Monday on that.
Si, llevará a cabo una denuncia este lunes. ¿Y tienen, qué piensan, la buena popularidad? O creo yo que estamos presentando la posición de la Suela de Los Ángeles, veremos lo que hace LAFCO con eso.
Well, I have to be consistent, because I think consistency is the right thing to do. I voted against that decision.
Porque creo yo que, en mi comunidad, a principios de los sesenta, todos vinieron a nuestra comunidad y nos dijeron que lo que tenemos que hacer, cómo compartir, cómo comportarnos y cómo actuar. Algunas veces, varios activistas en la comunidad decidieron que nosotros tenemos una decisión, llamada propia determinación, y yo no he cambiado mucho. Fue una posición liberal, entonces, que liberales favorecían determinación propia por los que estamos siendo afectados, por la decisión. Ellos deben de hacer decisión o los que están fuera. Creo yo que mi filosofía es un poco diferente porque yo fui entrenado en un ambiente y área diferente bajo diferentes grupos de circunstancias, por lo tanto, yo pienso de manera diferente, por lo tanto, creo yo...
I believe then, and self-determination, I believe, I'm against apartheid.
No, estoy en contra de la partida.
I think that people should decide, not that there's an equation, but people should decide what kind of government they want themselves and how they want to do it.
Que las hago vivir, ellos quieren por sí mismos, para sí mismos y cómo ellos quieren contestar sus necesidades, y yo no veo nada equivocado con, que personas voten no, si no quieren vivir. Yo estoy a favor de que Hollywood se divida, no creo que es una parte integral de esta ciudad. Creo que debe de permanecer aquí, pero esto, esto es el punto, el punto de que esta decisión debe de serse por ellos. Consiguieron los reglamentos, recibieron, consiguieron todas las firmas...
They don't look really good in that favor. If you put it off and have more meetings in the community, they might decide it's a good idea.
Muchas no es tanto interés, entonces espera hasta su lado, vayan y gane. Y yo no quiero agitar esto más, ganar es ganar. Ustedes han seguido los reglamentos, si han seguido los reglamentos...
Let it be done, let it be done.
Que se haga, que se haga, lo que ellos quieren hacer, que se decida lo que ellos quieran. Si o si no, ellos quieren decir por sí mismos lo que quieren o no. Se llama determinación propia.
Our bondage, and I believe in self-determination, never believed in bondage. And I'm going to vote against the motion, the idea.
Voy a votar yo en contra de esta moción, en contra de la idea.
Mr. Labange, please.
Señor Labange. Señor presidente, miembros del Consilio. Yo fui a muchas reuniones que llevaba LAFCO, y lo que me preocupó es que dejaron muchas cositas pendientes en la mesa, y también creo en propia determinación, darle el derecho a las personas para votar, pero también yo tengo precaución de que ellos no pongan algo en la balota que no tiene una vista clara. Estamos a la cerca de la balota, olvidese lo que dicen las encuestas, vayan, hablen con su pueblo y continúen haciendo el trabajo, el trabajo que ellos quieren, que nosotros hagamos, y ellos contestarán afirmativamente en noviembre. Continúan trabajando, durosamente, nuestros, la misión de los estudiantes tienen que trabajar más durosamente, pero porque esta ciudad lo requiere, pero lo que me preocupa es que en este proceso aquí, como mencioné, esta ciudad se inició hace doscientos veintidós años este cuarto de septiembre, cuenta con cuarenta y cuatro personas, trabajaron nueve millas a la misión de San Gabriel y fundaron el pueblo de Los Angeles, y no es todo, mucha historia. Y el trato de Guadalupe, igual es cual está adquirió, los derechos que todavía ahora utilizamos, es una eficacia política, lo dejaron en la mesa y dijeron si se dividen las ciudades, todavía tendrán servicios públicos y las tasas van a ser mínimas. Veinte por ciento del agua percibimos de esa, la ciudad de Los Ángeles, ese Valle San Fernando, lo que quiere decir es que sea una división, que veinte por ciento de esa agua vendrá a la ciudad de Los Ángeles si hay una sequía. El impacto es muy serio, estos son asuntos que no fueron considerados. ¿Esto es lo correcto, estoy equivocado? ¿Alabado? No creo yo que estos fueron, no creo yo que fueron considerados, pero usted tiene que considerar que el sistema de servicios públicos permanece intacto en Los Ángeles, incluyendo derechos de agua. Los Ángeles no perderán sus derechos al agua. Ellos tienen una situación donde hay una sequía en la ciudad previa de Los Ángeles, y reciben el agua primero, si esto es la ciudad nueva, quizás recibirán agua importada del servicio metropolitano a más alto costo. Estos detalles integrales. No fueron mencionados. ¿Saben ustedes también que el Congreso aprobó el pueblo de Los Ángeles en mil ochocientos cincuenta y dos, cincuenta y tres? Disculpe. Pero afirmaron el trabajo de la Ley de España, cuando yo puse de pie enfrente a LAFCO, dije deben hablar con el consulado de España, deben repasar la historia de pueblo de Los Ángeles, me ignoraron, dijeron bien, estas son, en el de Alhenez, van, norte en Hoover, y pasa ahí a través del sector original del pueblo de Los Ángeles. Yo pensé yo que está equivocado, esto está equivocado. Luchamos frente al parque ahí, y si no, es tan raro esto, yo, uno, que lo que ustedes dicen bien, todo lo que les puedo decir, dejaron muchas cosas pendientes, ya que vienen el tiempo, pero no nuestro tiempo, no nuestro tiempo, pero gracias, solamente quiero decirles que tenemos que hacer lo correcto. Gracias, señor Labange.
The chair now recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Señor Reyes, gracias. Las cosas que ustedes vinieron aquí entre nosotros, les hicimos varias preguntas acerca del impacto y junto con lo que el concejal Labange ha mencionado, que habremos de hacer decisiones informadas. Yo quiero ser referencia a la pérdida del dólar cuando tratamos con asuntos como proyectos para mejorar nuestras calles, para mejorar nuestros plazos en las estaciones y nuestras comunidades, para mejorar nuestra habilidad de, que nuestro carro pase a través de esa área y el impacto tendrá en... Una vez tuvimos una oportunidad de al menos recibir... Una lista de todos los proyectos, proyectos que esta ciudad tiene pendiente considerando nuestra capacidad para mejorar nuestra propia infraestructura como ciudad en vez de una nueva ciudad que tiene que ponerse en línea, tiene que resolicitar lo que significa que no vamos a poder mejorar esas calles, aunque ellos están de ese paso, saben que esta ciudad ya ha presentado solicitud para, si nosotros tenemos una cantidad, una lista de proyectos que no vamos a recibir dinero porque es una nueva ciudad, tengo que sentir que nosotros tenemos que ahora exprimir estos mejoramientos para mejorar tránsito.
All right.
Señor Reyes, varias cosas. Primero, mi nombre es Hamilton, de Hamilton. Primer asunto, que lo que puede usted pagar, antes de llegar a la primera de la otra persona, tal como está ahorita todo, el contratista del LAFCO y el director ejecutivo del LAFCO, lo que ustedes han recomendado es un pago anual de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, aproximadamente veinte millones de dólares, considerando el hecho de que no va a haber neutralidad en caso de los dos, si que Hollywood fuera separado, eso es veintiún millones de dólares anuales después. La siguiente pregunta es qué, por hecho, necesitará la ciudad de Los Ángeles para mantener los niveles de servicio antes de la división, por el hecho que la ciudad tendrá que continuar pagando después de que Hollywood fuera separado, estos son costos pendientes. Hablamos en el Valle sobre la posición acerca de costos en ese caso, en el caso de Hollywood, como dijo yo, el presupuesto de LAFCO es veintiún millones, ya no, les estamos ahorita en el proceso de calculación final para la división de Hollywood y todos los organismos de la ciudad, puede ser bien la base de los primeros diecisiete que incluyen las más grandes. Creemos que es el número hasta ahora sesenta y cinco millones de dólares. Ahora, no hemos terminado con la ciudad, terminaremos mañana tarde, con todas las calculaciones, ya hemos tenido que repasar todo esto muy rápidamente, pero no hay duda que si, la ciudad de Los Ángeles desea poder financiar el mismo nivel de servicios después de la división de Hollywood, si esto ocurre, y ahora está siendo, va a haber un número mucho más alto, si usted agrega los cinco millones en diferencia, ahora sería un pago de ochenta y seis millones de dólares anuales, y claramente va a pasar más de cien, incluso vemos que quedan, son mucho más pequeños. Por tanto, la primera pregunta es, qué, es su propio dinero, el propio dinero de la ciudad tiene usted. Ahora la pregunta es, cómo es que usted informa personas, el proceso de, que recibe de fondos federales, estatales, no hay duda de que mucho de esto tendrá que rehacerse porque la ciudad de Los Ángeles ha prestado solicitud, tiene una nueva ciudad, una ciudad de Hollywood y una ciudad de el Valle, pero todo esto va a ser lanzado al aire por cierto tiempo con qué solución tendrá, no puedo decirle. Otra cosa que quiero decir, en lo que señor Fugioca presentó, hay varias actividades en Hollywood, y no se incluyen los costos, el ejemplo clásico es el departamento de luz en las calles, se hacen cinco pies cuadrados de espacio de oficina, en Hollywood es la operación central de ese departamento, si usted quiere que ese departamento esté en la ciudad, en el estado de servicio, y la ciudad de Hollywood se dividiera, usted necesita moverlo, y esto va a ser, lo que nosotros llamaríamos, un costo de fricción, de ajuste a este problema, esto no está en el número nacional. Cuando él habla acerca del departamento bombero, hay seis diferentes estaciones de bomberos en Hollywood, pero las estaciones están ubicadas casi exactamente en los límites entre la ciudad de Hollywood y la ciudad de Los Ángeles, como permanecerá, eso es un giro de cincuenta por ciento más del área de servicio, que las estaciones de servicio todavía permanecerán en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Por lo tanto, claro será de qué ese sistema, dentro de la ciudad de Hollywood, no va a tener sentido que Hollywood, si se toma ese son, tenemos en eso, no necesitará todas estas estaciones, solo contra las estaciones están en Hollywood, en la propiedad de Hollywood, entonces, la ciudad de Los Ángeles para cubrir la área que ahora cubre tiene el sentido adecuado, donde nuestro sistema actual, usted quiere esta cobertura de bombero tiene que crear nuevas estaciones, nuevas paradas que tiene usted ahora, si estas son excluidas, esto no dará servicios territorio con la misma rapidez de tiempo. Toda la transmisión de comunicación de este centro de la ciudad de Los Ángeles está en Hollywood, en Mount Lee. La pregunta es de qué hará con eso, habrá acuerdo de que estés, continuará siendo utilizado, claro, eso será negociado, pero actualmente, ahí está, y se le pregunta usted, ¿alí te ha, algún departamento quiere a usted? Si usted pierde ese lugar, la respuesta es de que hablando acerca de tipografía, no haya otro lugar alternativo, otro lugar que ofrece el mismo, la misma ventaja técnica y física, por lo tanto, que se hagan dos lugares nuevos, francamente, no hay plan de ahora. Esos dos nuevos lugares nuevos también no se conocen, entonces hay varios, varias cosas. se conocen, entonces hay varios, varias cosas de este tipo, que no están incluso en estos números y estos representarán mucho coste, gracias, yo creo en propia determinación, pero hay que asegurarnos, hay que entender lo que estamos tratando, yo apoyo lo que usted está viendo porque es obvio que en esta plática hay muchos factores equis, muchas cosas desconocidas y las personas no entienden lo que esto significa, y para entender que costes críticos, el impacto día tras día, de cruzar la calle y asegurar que nadie nos atropella y sabiendo que hay varios dólares ya pendientes para mejorar esa boca calle, personas tienen que, eso son las demandas que las personas presentarán y eso mejoramente no correrán porque no podemos, no tendremos a los ángeles como necesidad.
Thank you, members of the council, there is no other person wishing to be heard at this point. Mr. Clerk, please indicate what's before us.
Una solución para adoptar y requerir una moción de parte del grupo.
I hear no such motion. I'm sorry?
I move the resolution.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Mizakowski and seconded by Mr. Arsetti, is that not correct? It is then properly before us, Mr. Clerk.
Porque usted está ante el pendiente, actuario.
Then let us proceed. Please open the roll.
Abra ese voto.
Close the roll.
Ser ese voto.
Now tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
All right, thank you very much, next item, please.
Do you wish that matter to go forth with?
It has been requested to go forth with, and if there's no objection, that will be the order.
Mr. President, item number five called special by Councilmember Holden.
All right, now, item number five is before us.
Asunto número cinco, pendiente, por concejal Holden.
We're always pleased to have Mr. Merkin in the council chamber, sir, the inevitable Fred Merkin. Mr. Holden, there's another item before us, this is item number five.
Señor Holden, el otro asunto pendiente es el asunto número cinco, le sea, hacia presentación.
Yes, Ms. Holden, I need the staff, yes, Mr. President.
Sí señor presidente.
The staff is going to come and tell us why they are going to go for two years or three years or whatever extension.
Creo que mi personal van a venir a informarnos porque van a estar pidiendo dos o tres años.
I know, I think I was suggesting that we have a year, why did he, two years with all the problems that these companies are having nationally, and then you have to bail them out if they have a problem. The city could be hurt, I think. Go ahead, tell us why you ask for this amount of time.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden.
Queremos porque están pidiendo extensión.
With ITA, there's a multi-part answer to the question of why we are seeking a two-year extension for the cable franchise in Area A, which is the valley with West Valley Cable Vision Industries, more commonly known as Time Warner.
Time Warner ha iniciado un proceso de renovación de acuerdo con la ley federal, en ley federal se espera una renovación, este proceso no ha terminado y ahora el contrato de Time Warner se terminó, se nos viene una extensión de dos años, es una, es mejor claro que la de extender el contrato actual, casi puede tener declaración legal de los requisitos que, esta opinión debe de reunir para servir a público, después eso no es la única actividad que está en la agenda para la ciudad, actualmente la ciudad tiene 15 diferentes contratos con diferentes operadores de cable, estamos en proceso de negociar el, la 16, el contrato número 16, disculpias, en tres de esas áreas se están venciendo y requieren nuevos procesos formalmente de acuerdo con la ley federal, tenemos también los asuntos, cuestiones con la fecha límite que se está venciendo. Con lo tanto, la extensión puede tomar hasta dos años y terminamos este proceso y cuando solamente negociación incluye es presentar una compañía propuesta, la junta y el consejo, si termináramos esto dentro de dos años no terminaríamos, dentro de dos años.
How many years have this franchisee, this franchise?
The cable franchises in the 14 areas of the city were negotiated in 1987, so approximately 15 years.
Los contratos al cable fueron negociados en 87, aproximadamente 15 años y ya se está terminando el tiempo, la ciudad sabía que el tiempo se venía, hace tres años sabíamos esto, estaban re negociando el contrato, ¿sabe por qué no hicieron eso?
Since I was just hired a few short months ago.
Me acaban de contactar hace unos cuantos meses y no estaba bien, no puedo explicar de usted la razón.
I will tell you that it is not unusual for franchise, local franchising authorities to extend franchises. There is a need, ascertaintment process is quite involved, that needs to be completed, which is not.
Hay falta de liderazgo y puestos pendientes en este departamento.
Oh, I was just saying that all of those factors have attributed, also the high number of franchise holders that we have in the city of Los Angeles makes the process more difficult than what other cities in county face having one or two operators.
En comparación a otros contados y otras ciudades que tienen los contratos y operadores.
Here's a question, Mr. President. The question is, of these franchises that you have out there that you're negotiating, what if any of them are having trouble like we here around the country right now?
Problemas económicos, entendimiento es bastante información que tenemos ahora es que solamente Adelphia es el que tiene problemas económicos en otras operaciones, que está muy bien con nuestros contratistas de cable que no han empezado, operaciones también tuvo problemas económicos, más allá tenemos una ocasión que los otros contratistas no tienen mucha parte del mundo, no están proveyendo servicios por tiempo, nosotros 15.
The other operators, not that I'm aware of.
Nosotros operadores de cable, no, yo no sé, ha investigado esto, pero señor, señor Holden, lo que está pendiente es Time Warner, yo sé, pero el hecho que usted está negociando, sé lo que está ante nosotros, señor presidente, el asunto, el asunto es sí, ella me dice afirmativamente que ella está haciendo una investigación detallada y sí sé que no, tercer asunto, señora, las preguntas, señor Holden.
The specific point is Time Warner.
El punto específico es Time Warner.
And each one of those franchises is being analyzed on its own merit, so as to whether or not time is being held for the purposes of clarification, as I chair the committee, I'm seeking to clarify.
Estoy teniendo su tiempo para aclaración, pero yo quiero aclarar este punto, pero gracias señor presidente.
I can speak to Time Warner. We review the obligations that the cable company has for us, and Time Warner, both in terms of customer service, which is often an indicator of financial health, is doing very well, they're paying their franchise fees as part of the normal process and in preparation for renewal activities, the department does two things, one, we do, conduct a franchise fee audit to ensure that they have paid us correctly, and number two, the financial ability of the cable operator to provide services that meet the needs and interests of the city are reviewed during the renewal process, they have not been renewed as part of the extension process, but again, I would say Time Warner is meeting the obligations of their current franchise.
Mr. President, closing, it's relevant, the question I was asking, because you were also in the process of negotiating with Adelphia.
También están en proceso de negociar con Adelphia.
And we know what happened to them.
Sabemos lo que lo que lleva ellos y ahora, usted está hablando acerca de Time Warner y no sabemos todas las respuestas, por eso que estoy haciendo estas preguntas, para que usted así pueda dar las respuestas, porque si algo faltaba, estaba exponiendo esa negociación y no fue competido con el comité del Consilio, no fue competido con este miembro del Consilio, por eso pensé que era adecuado hacer ese punto porque son pertinentes.
The chair now recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues. We started off by my colleague about companies with problems, and we don't want to condemn all companies for the...
Dice que todas las compañías están actuando igual que las otras compañías, usted dice que no le deben costos en alguna ciudad, y la situación del cliente está bien.
Time Warner had the best record with the city of customer service of the operators for calendar year 2001.
One further question, and I was on the committee which recommended this extension for two years, and I do support that extension, is there a competitive bid process with Time Warner in that arena? Can someone else during this process bid for that area? Is there a competitive nature, or is it a review of Time Warner for that designated area, or can someone else come and say we want to bid for that?
It requires more than a yes and no answer, if you would indulge me.
El proceso de renovación de acuerdo a la ley federal tiene esperanza de renewal with the current incumbent cable operator, but as you go through the renewal process and the city determines its needs through the needs ascertaintment activities, if the incumbent cannot meet the needs of the city going forward, the city could invoke a formal renewal process, the operator actually could invoke a formal renewal process, which is much like a trial, and through that process you could go competitive and do requests for qualifications and bring in other operators to compete.
So it's not like the toll operations where comes up a renewal and everyone can compete and bid to find out if they're going to take over that operation, this is a different focus.
Yes, sir, it is a different focus. Most local franchise authorities go through the informal process, which is negotiating with the current operator. In our two-year extension, we have built in time to do the formal renewal process, should that become necessary.
Okay, and I'd just like to comment that Time Warner does serve the third district committee I represent, and the constituents are very pleased with it, and I would comment that they're very accessible to public access, and they do benefit not only, dan gran beneficio solamente a través de televisión de la, de cable, pero también llevan nuestro canal 35 en toda la región, y se han recibido cojas, por tanto, a apoyo de la combinación de una extensión de dos años.
All right, I see no other person wishing to be heard at this point.
Antes de nada, el reporte del comité de tecnología de información para consideración. Miembro, estamos listos para prestar voto, actuario, abra ese voto.
Close the roll.
Ser ese voto.
Please tabulate the vote.
Once, sí.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the next order of business.
The ordinance will go over one week, and as much as you only have 11 members present.
La ordenanza tiene que ser extendida para los menores, hay 11 miembros presentes.
All right. I think we have several persons wishing to be heard on item number 42.
En asunto 47.
Gail Pinkering, Gregory Thompson, Robert Legron.
Gregory Thompson.
Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, Mort Allen, in that order, if you would come forward and be heard at this time of public hearing. Gail Pinkering.
Gail Pinkering.
Sir, may we ask that we change the order, or is that set in stone?
Puedemos cambiar la orden, o si está fijo.
Sir, your name.
Señor nombre.
Would you please proceed, and the balance of the persons whose names I've called, would you please come forward, so that you can be heard as well?
Mencionado, pasen para hacerse la presentación.
Please proceed.
Thanks, sir. As I said, my name is Robert Legron, I work for Greg Thompson and the Thompson Media Company, essentially as his location scout in Los Angeles. As you know, this item involves a billboard sign that happens to be the last sign that I am building myself in Los Angeles, it was one that was applied for before the moratorium hit in December of the year 2000, so this is a very old permit that was put in under the old rules. I know this is just one of many items on today's agenda, I hope you'll hear me out because it's extremely important to me, the issue you're deciding is essentially half of my year's pay for this year. In fact, I missed a family reunion to be here, I haven't had to do that since I was in a Persian Gulf eight years ago, but I decided I couldn't afford not to be here today.
All right, sir, we'll just ask you to proceed with your remarks, be mindful of the fact that there are five other persons wishing to be heard, if you have written testimony, we'll be glad to receive it and cause it to be a part of the file.
Yes, sir, I actually passed out a handout, gave it to the sergeant at arms, I wanted to know if that was given to all the council members, if you would indulge me and pull that out and take a look at it, it's very important to me. I'm essentially reading from it here, it has four reasons why I'm asking you to vote to allow this sign to be built. First off, the sign has been found to be 100% legal under the rules, it's spent a year and a half getting very carefully vetted, first by the Department of Building and Safety, and then by the zoning administrator through the plan approval process, which is why it's taken this long, because we had to wait a long time for the hearing and the appeal. It's found to meet every single legal requirement, in fact, we're not even close to the limits. In the motion, it was mentioned that this sign would make two next to the intersection near which it's located at Sepultoada and Chase up in Panorama City. In fact, the law allows four, it essentially allows one to be at each corner of the intersection, this sign would make only two. As for spacing, the issue of clutter has been brought up, but the law deals with that, we don't need a subjective opinion on what is clutter, the law says that the medium-sized billboard that is the closest one up the street from my sign has to be 300 feet away, in fact, we have more than 600 feet. Also, on the clutter issue, I should say that if we wouldn't be building this sign, I would not have chosen this location as a good location for the sign if it were cluttered because it wouldn't be any good, nobody would want to put advertising on it because the visibility of the sign would not be good, this is good only because it can be seen for a long way. The second thing, the local area planning commission voted unanimously to support this, you've probably seen their findings in them, they basically say that not only is the sign legal, but it conforms very well to the area, it's a busy commercial area, lots of C2 zones, it's not a fancy area, it's not an aesthetic area, there's a body shop across the street, a lot of damaged cars parked there, truck rental up the street, gas stations and stores, not a fancy area, it's basically a reasonably prosperous area that is really where the law intended for these signs to go. The third thing, both the property owner and the tenant benefit from this sign. Property owner, and she's here to speak on her own behalf today, the basis of it is that she is not here to raise the rent on her tenant after many years because she's afraid that she might lose a good tenant, leaving a vacant ugly lot behind. So this benefits both of them because the rental income from the sign alleviates the pressure on her to raise her rent. And the final point, if you were to deny this, as I said, you're literally waving your hand and confiscating half of my year's pay. This is a two-year project that I started in the summer of 2000, these are very big ticket items for me, I build two signs a year on average, and I really can't state any stronger than that. It's extremely important to me. We have scrupulously abided by the laws, as I said, the sign is 100% legal, that hasn't been challenged, and we're all really asking us for the law to respect us. Are there questions for me? I'm dying to answer any questions you might have.
We appreciate your testimony, so respectfully request that you not die here, and then we will have a public discussion of the same after we hear from the remaining four speakers.
Gracias, si habla pregunta se van a acabar después de que otros presentadores hagan su presentación.
Hi, my name is Greg Thompson, I'm the founder and president of Thompson Media Company. I had sent a letter to each one of the council members.
Espero que ustedes vengan a leerlo, obviamente me gustaría por medio de aquí por una hora repasar todas las voces que en esta carta te de, incluir lo más posible, lo más importante acerca de lo que ha pasado con todo esto.
And I'd like to document the time at 2:45. Right now, I've got a letter that just came from our legal counsel that's up in Mr. Padilla's office, that I was hoping to be here right now to hand out, but I'd like for that at least to go on the record, that it is in his chambers. The reason why I would like to speak...
So did you document the time as what?
I just wanted to document the time, so that, because the facts will be documented as well to show that it was here at the time that he spoke.
Well, you should document it correctly, it's not 2:45, sir.
Que están en las actas adecuadamente, no, son las 2:45, no, son las 12:45.
12:45, all right, proceed, sir.
I'm sorry, apologize.
That's no problem.
On November 11th, we submitted an application to building and safety to erect this billboard, and this was prior to the ICO, it was prior to the standards that are in effect today. So I'm not going to stand here and try to debate the law, I mean, it's obvious that Councilman Padilla has the authority to do what he's doing, which is 2:45 is location, so then, so he has the legal right to do this. What I'm here to ask you to look at is, is it the right thing to do? I think what we've done here is we've thrown the baby out with the bathwater, you know, the billboard issue is obviously extremely controversial, and I think what we've done is we've lost sight of what exactly we can offer his constituents, I mean, we talk about the public outcry against billboard, but what we have to look at, the benefit in which the signs have in Mr. Padilla's district, you know, Sepultoada, there again, commercial district. This advertising sign obviously is a benefit to his community. You know, on the way here, from the airport, I just made note of a few of the advertising signs that I saw on the way. The constituents need to know, and need to be able to, like everyone else in the city, you've got to understand, the city is a 100-year-old industry that has been around. And on and on and on. All I'm trying to say is the validity of an advertising sign.
Yes.
It's got a valid point. Mr. Padilla, obviously, we've got to a point where we're so busy looking at a billboard as a structure and the aesthetic negatives that may or may not be based on personal opinion, that we've lost sight of the value that these signs have in these areas. If each one of these, one person went out and bought everything that they saw on a billboard, the obviously, the economic benefits and values to the community and to the city and I believe that today that the city of Los Angeles is as prosperous it is because the billboard industry has contributed to the economic value of the community. So what I'm asking is this. We submitted our application under an old set of guidelines. Mr. Padilla obviously has the authority to 2:45 and all I'm here to say is, Mr. Legron has mentioned, we've spent almost two years on this project. We've done everything Building and Safety has asked us to do. We've dotted every I, we've crossed every T, we've gone through the zoning administrator's office, we've been approved by the area planning commission. And all I'm asking the city council to do, the council members to do, is to govern this project under the same set of guidelines and rules that were in effect at the time the application was submitted. And don't try to introduce today's standards of billboards. Obviously, the city council has done its job of enacting new ordinances which we all have to live up to. This does not fall into that category and this is a previous application that should be judged based on the previous laws that were effective at the time. So all I'm asking is that maybe don't even look at this from a law standpoint, look at it as a right thing to do. Don't just discard it because it's a billboard, but look at it on its merit.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Next speaker is please.
My name is Gail Pickering. I'm a resident of District Two and as you already all know, I own a commercial piece of property in District Seven. It consists of two lots where a small family-owned business, a Daco Campers' Shells, is located. In 1992, upon the death of my aunt, I inherited the property and rented it to Daco Campers' Shells. They have been a continuous renter since my aunt and uncle have owned this property. Although one of the goals with rental property is to make money, I have tried to keep the rent as low and as reasonable as possible for this family-owned business. However, because of the continued increase in costs and property taxes, particularly with the reassessment after the death of my aunt, this will not be possible much longer. It was my desire that by renting a small portion of my land to Thompson Media, I would be able to continue to maintain reasonable rent which would allow the Guthrie family to continue their business in Los Angeles and provide me with the revenue I need to pay the taxes and earn a living. In October 2000, I entered into a contract with Thompson Media to construct and rent a sign on my commercial property. Now, nearly two years later, the sign is still not erected and I have received no rent because of the delays and obstacles presented by the city of Los Angeles. At the time I entered into the contract, I carefully reviewed the area to be sure that the sign would not be negatively impacted by tenants or the community. A simulation of how the sign would look after its construction was provided by Thompson Media validated that it would be tastefully done. I certainly did not see any negative impact on its installation for my tenant or the neighboring business community. Frankly, I was amazed and extremely disappointed to discover recently that finally receiving approval by the Department of Building and Safety for the construction of the sign, a city councilman was moved to prevent the installation because his sole opinion, the sign would negatively impact the aesthetics of the area. The reality is that this area already has numerous commercial signs. It is frankly very difficult for me to believe that one more sign suddenly has a negative aesthetic impact on this area. I failed to understand why Councilman Padilla has singled out my property. Based on the action of a single councilman who has no legitimate legal, social or moral basis to pose the sign construction on my property, I am now at risk of permanently losing future income. The courts have long recognized under the First Amendment of our Constitution that a public official cannot have the power to approve or disapprove a project based on his sole discretion. In 1996, the Ninth District Court ruled on an ordinance erected by the city of Moreno Valley regarding the approval of billboard signs. The ruling held that the ordinance violated the First Amendment because, among other factors, city officials had the discretion to deny a permission on basis of ambiguous and subjective reasons. Under the ordinance by the city of Moreno, a city official could arbitrarily deny a billboard for aesthetic reasons. Here, the facts are even more egregious. After an owner has met all the requirements of the city, Councilman Padilla is attempting to independently move to prevent the installation because in his view, the sign would negatively impact the aesthetic quality of the neighborhood. His actions are arbitrary, subjective and in clear violation of my First Amendment rights. This simply should not be allowed to happen. When a citizen has followed proper channels and has taken proper approval for the construction of a project, a single councilman should not be allowed to prevent it from moving forward. It is my hope that the rest of the council recognizes how this action violates my rights and stops him from preventing the construction of a sign on commercial property in a commercial area that already has signs. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
You know, I have nightmares over this word billboard. I've never hated a word so much in my life. I'm going to call Ms. Pickering is one of our residential leaders in Studio City. She lives at Ridwood Drive and she's one of the largest property owners around and she called me and I looked into this and I don't want to get out of this one location. What I want to say is this, first of all, if you read your thing, it says it's a mini shopping center. Is any of you driven by and looked at it? It's so many, it says shopping center. It's a camper show. It's got thousands of camper shows. Now, people on the west side drive their Range Rovers, but in that area, everybody's got Toyota pickup trucks and camper shows for the weekends. In this company, they've got maybe a thousand camper shows. They're a big volume business, but there's a low market. So she's got two choices. She could sell it to a developer for a mini mall or she can keep her income. But I think what's really important here, and this is what I want to stress on everybody, I can give a damn. I drove down there yesterday and I was scared to death. I had my top down. I mean, it's like the hood. It's Chase and Sepulveda. It's a pretty bad area. It's a pretty bad, it's very bad. There's a tire store across the street at U-Haul. It's not very nice. The street's right inside there is what they call Light Street and the hood there. Anyway, the question is this. We have area planning commissions, is what the valley wanted. We wanted to have our own destiny. The fact that this went before an area planning commission, and Alex is certainly my buddy, and his office never came here and said anything, and it passes an area planning commission where you have these guys that all went out and looked at the property and they agree that, hey, there is a bunch of other billboards around there. It's a main, Sepulveda is certainly a main thoroughfare. The 405 is so jammed, there's a lot of traffic. And all I'm saying is, you're going to set a precedence here that's going to fall right into the enemy's hands that the ABCs don't mean anything, that you can just appeal them. Yeah, appeal it if they're going to put a high rise up, but for one lousy, one more of the 10,000 billboards, I just think that it's not going to do well for all the ladies' friends in Studio City and all that. And I don't think it's an issue that you should want up some people.
Thank you for your testimony. Final speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins and as a disabled entrepreneur, business owner, and as of dealing with signs concerning billboards, I'm concerned about the cost of the signs. I've looked it up and I'm interested in buying billboard signs, but we're looking at $3,000 up in this area. I believe that that is too much money. Also, the size of this sign is 14 by 48-foot sign. I believe that is really too big of a sign versus the smallest signs. I'm not sure the cost. It must be more than $3,000. Also, the area which we're going in, which is North Valley area, it is too congested. We've got three or four signs in one area. We do not want a look as the Las Vegas style. I know, I've never really been to Las Vegas, but I have saw a lot of pictures of Las Vegas and it's too many signs everywhere, just was trying to light it up to look as though it's Las Vegas or New York. I'm concerned about the positive and the negative of advertisement concerning strippers. And once I heard, I understand he was talking about the movie theater, they have their signs and TV, okay, but we have to keep a positive image because of our kids, especially concerning stripping. Okay, I'm not, you know, I know men are into stripping, but we have kids that does not know what is stripping all about. We put up signs with naked women on it, then that is kind of offensive to some people. As of in looking for a Las Vegas-style sign in Beverly Hills or Century City, I don't think that that is too exciting. As of getting off the freeway on Wilshire Boulevard, now you're on Santa Monica, in that area alone is tremendous signs when you get off the freeway, okay? That is also could be danger. It's driving, if you put too much signs, which is too big of a sign, everyone looking at a certain area, it could be a danger. I know this has been going on over two years, but we are very concerned about the area, about the cost and the size and the positivity.
Thank you. We're going to ask you to conclude.
Okay, last but not least, I just want to say that I know the Fourth of July is coming. I wish everybody happy Fourth of July. Also, the concern of our safety of our kids, shooting and false fireworks and the fear of that.
Thank you very much and the same to you. Thank you. That closes the public hearing. There are three persons wishing to be heard. We begin with Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to begin by making my motion and then I'll get to my reasoning and the argument. Colleagues, I want to move the area planning commission's action and uphold the zoning administrator's decision, which was to deny this application. I wanted to start with that because it's been referenced that the area planning commission has acted one way, but I wanted to let everybody here know that the zoning administrator had acted initially to disapprove this application. We've had conversations about billboards on and off for the last several months. So I think we know where most of the council members stand when it comes to billboards, when it comes to
The opinion of all the councilors in this area.
Blight sometimes that billboards contribute to a community that's already blighted. In the North Hills community, I know Councilmember Gru is familiar with it, Councilmember Burns is familiar with it, Councilmember Zikowsky is familiar with that.
I know the councilor Gru, the councilor Burns, the councilor Zikowsky. We've all been talking about this area, this area of the area, this public area. Historically, we've dealt with a lot of things. It's an area that has grown significantly without the proper growth of parks, spaces, schools and development and what have you. It's a community that historically has been decaying.
We're turning it around.
We have schools in construction. We have parks coming online, including the North Hills Community Park. We have a couple of blocks of this site.
And yes, there are too many, in my opinion, signs already in this area.
I just said that there are many billboards in this area.
Just because a sign would be legal doesn't mean it would be the best thing for the community.
One of the public speakers talked about what billboards bring to the community. You can talk about movies, you can talk about cell phones, you can talk about everything you want. But one of the things that several districts have suffered from is when the strip joints, the spearmint rhinos and those types of billboards come up in an area.
Well, this stretch of Sepulveda Boulevard would not only be another target for those boards, in fact, it houses some of those establishments. And we're trying to turn that around. Then the design just yesterday had a press conference with our city attorney trying to clean up those types of establishments from the community trying to improve upon themselves. That's the community here. I would make the billboard arguments all day long. I just want to uphold the zoning administrator's decision. The colleagues are asked to be sensitive to and aware of the community arguments of why, yes, just one more billboard on top of the many that are already would contribute to additional blight and would not add to the revitalization of that corridor that is currently underway. I would ask for your support for my motion to overturn the APC decision and to uphold the zoning administrator's action. Thank you.
Sir, a second to the motion. Alright, thank you, Mr. Padilla. The chair now recognizes Ms. Mizakowski followed by Mr. Zain.
I would like to ask the zoning administrator to come forward. Members of the council, I was someone just looking at the background on this and what this was, this was a discretionary action that required a zoning administrator action under the commercial corner law, which says a sign reaching this height above what is allowed by right at that corner has to have a discretionary hearing and discretionary process. This is the zoning administrator who has the hearing. I'd like to ask her why, how she conducted the hearing and what her determination was and why.
Yes, at the hearing, I based my determination on the mandated findings that we have to make for a plan approval, which this project was subject to. The major findings are pertaining to the public convenience and welfare, as has been indicated earlier, there is absolutely no shortage of advertising surface in the area. And I did not think that the addition of a new billboard would be really improving the public convenience and welfare. There is absolutely no shortage of area for advertisement in this neighborhood. In terms of location of the sign, in relation to adjacent uses, Sepulveda Boulevard is a major highway. It is true, it is also a commercial corridor, but there are apartments which are located immediately to the east of the project and the residents of these apartments would have been impacted by the view of this area. Finally, in terms of harmony with the objectives of the general plan, the general plan for the area very clearly, and I'm quoting right now, has as an objective to enhance the appearance of commercial districts and also to put an emphasis on provisions and maintenance of the visual continuity of streetscapes and the creation of an environment that encourages pedestrian and economic activity. I do not feel that billboard is really geared toward any kind of pedestrian activity. By its size and its location, it's definitely targeting vehicular passage and in terms of visual environment, the abundance of onsite, I must say, not just offsite signs in my opinion, really quite a clutter.
It's many, it's many. I think it's appropriate to have put on the record from the professional planner who held the hearing and went through this, so I know what the findings were meant to be and act accordingly, indicating that this was not a location that a project could prove under those standards. I support that action. I think it's correct and bringing this forward. I thought some of the testimony, which indicated that as one was driving in the city, seeing the proliferation of billboards and using that as a rationale, this is exactly the reason that this was prevented. Exactly the reason why this council adopted the absolute ban on billboards because that proliferation of billboards is not what we want. So we put a limit in this. We've eliminated billboards previous to that action in many of our city plans in the past and many of those districts in our community. What we want to do is we want to improve those commercial areas. I think that's what Mr. Padilla is attempting.
I think that the capability to make the decision as acted on by the zoning administrator is the correct action and I support Mr. Padilla in his motion today.
The action is correct, that's why we have called the administrator to move today. I think it's the right action and I support Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Ms. Mizakowski. The chair recognizes Mr. Zain followed by Mr. Holder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to send a mixed message. This body established
I want to send a message. A renovation of
But we're looking at $3,000 up in this area. I believe that is too much money. Also, the size of this sign is 14 by 48-foot sign. I believe that is really too big of a sign versus the small signs. I'm not sure the cost. It must be more than $3,000. Also, the area which we're going in, which is North Valley area, it is too congested. We've got three or four signs in one area. We do not want to look as the Las Vegas style. I know I've never really been in Las Vegas, but I have saw a lot of pictures of Las Vegas and it's too many signs everywhere just was trying to light it up to look as though it's Las Vegas or New York. I'm concerned about the positive and the negative of advertisement concerning strippers. And once I heard, I understand he was talking about the movie theater is they have their signs and TV. Okay, but we have to keep a positive image because of our kids, especially concerning stripping. Okay, I'm not, you know, I know men are into stripping, but we have kids that does not know what is stripping all about. We put up signs with naked women on it, then that is kind of offensive to some people. As of in looking for a Las Vegas style sign in Beverly Hills or Century City, I don't think that that is too exciting. As of getting off the freeway on Wilshire Boulevard, now you're on Santa Monica, in that area alone is tremendous signs when you get off the freeway. Okay, that is also could be danger. It's a driving, if you put too much signs, which is too big of a sign, everyone looking at a certain area, it could be a danger. I know this has been going on over two years, but we are very concerned about the area, about the cost.
All right.
And the size and the positivity.
Thank you. We're going to ask you to conclude.
Okay. Last but not least.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I know the Fourth of July is coming, I wish everybody happy Fourth of July. Also, the concern of our safety of our kids.
Good.
Shooting and false fireworks and the fear of that.
Thank you very much, and the same to you. Thank you. That closes the public hearing. There are three persons wishing to be heard. We begin with Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to begin by making my motion, and then I'll get to my reasoning and the argument. My motion, primero, colegas, quiero pedir que no aprueben la acción de la área y quiero pedir que obedezcamos la decisión de la zona. Y eso fue negar eso, nosotros queremos empezar con esto porque han hecho referencia que la Comisión de Planificación hizo algo, pero quiero que todo el mundo que sepa que en el estado de esta zona inicialmente no. Pero este se lo tuvimos tenido la conversación acerca de rótulos por muchos meses, por lo tanto, sabemos. La opinión de todos los concejales en cuanto a rótulos en ciertas áreas y. And the blight sometimes that billboards contribute to a community that's already blighted. In the North Hills community, I know Councilmember Gruel is familiar with it, Councilmember Burns is familiar with it, Councilmember Zekowski is familiar with that. Está comenzado con esta área, con esta área de la área, esa publicidad es uno donde históricamente hemos tratado con mucho delito, con mucho asunto de pandillas, una área que ha crecido muchísimo sin el crecimiento de cada espacio, de parques y escuelas y desarrollo de trabajo, por lo tanto, es una comunidad que históricamente ha estado decayendo. Lo estamos ahorita mejorando, tenemos escuelas bajo construcción, tenemos parques incluyendo el Parque de Norteos cerca de Sepulveda Boulevard, unos cuantos. And yet there are too many, in my opinion, signs already in this area. Caídos, pues dice que hay muchos rótulos en esta área. Solamente porque un rótulo es legal, no sé que va a ser lo mejor para la comunidad por hecho. Uno de los prestadores habló acerca del valor que tiene, que los rótulos presentan, la comunidad habló acerca de películas, de teléfonos celulares, pero ciertos distritos han sufrido de cuando los tipos de rótulos como Rhino y como desnudez se presentan en esta área, este lugar de Sepulveda, solamente va a ser otro blanco para estos rótulos y por hecho muchos de estos lugares están en, muchos de estos comercios, el desnudez está en esta área, estamos tratando de limpiar ese tipo de comercio para que la comunidad mejore. Esta es la comunidad aquí, podemos presentar argumento del rótulo, solo quiero pedir que sean sensibles ahí, que sepan de los argumentos de la comunidad, de por qué sí, solamente un más rótulo además de todos los que sindia y esto contribuirá a más. Cantidad de rótulos, si esto no va a mejorar esa área, por lo tanto, pido que aprueben mi motion.
Sir, a second to the motion. All right, thank you, Mr. Padilla. The chair now recognizes Ms. Mizakowski, followed by Mr. Zain.
I would like to ask the zoning administrator to come forward. Members of the council, I was someone just looking at the background on this. And what this was, this was a discretionary action that required a zoning administrator action under the commercial corner law, which says a sign reaching this height above what is allowed by right at that corner has to have a discretionary hearing and discretionary process. This is the zoning administrator who has the hearing. I'd like to ask her why, how she conducted the hearing and what her determination was and why.
Yes, at the hearing, I based my determination on the mandated findings that we have to make for a plan approval, which this project was subject to. The major findings are pertaining to the public convenience and welfare, as has been indicated earlier, there is absolutely no shortage of advertising surface in the area. And I did not think that the addition of a new billboard would be really improving the public convenience and welfare. There is absolutely no shortage of area for advertisement in this neighborhood. In terms of the location of the sign, in relation to adjacent uses, Sepulveda Boulevard is a major highway, it is true. It is also a commercial corridor, but there are apartments which are located immediately to the east of the project and the residents of these apartments would have been impacted by the view of this area. Finally, in terms of harmony with the objectives of the general plan, the general plan for the area, very clearly, and I'm quoting right now, has as an objective to enhance the appearance of commercial districts and also to put an emphasis on provisions and maintenance of the visual continuity of streetscapes and the creation of an environment that encourages pedestrian and economic activity. I do not feel that billboard is really geared toward any kind of pedestrian activity. It is by its size and its location, it's definitely targeting vehicular passage and in terms of visual environment, the abundance of onsite, I mean, not just offsite signs in my opinion, really quite a clutter.
Es mucho, son muchos rótulos. Gracias, señora. No, considero que esto era adecuado para que se fuera incluido en el recorrido, se llevó a una audiencia, se había acerca de la decisión y indicó que si era un lugar, un proyecto que ya podía probar bajo estas normas, yo apoyo esta acción, creo que señor Padilla está lo correcto, representar esto, escuché un testimonio, el cual indicó que cuando uno entra a la ciudad, cuando uno mira todos estos rótulos y utiliza esto como una razón de que esto se ha permitido, exactamente la razón por la cual, es lo contrario, es esta condición por la cual este Consilio adoptó hace poco la provisión de rótulos porque esta sobre población de rótulos, eso no es lo que queremos que sea, que esta ciudad, esa ciudad de rótulos pusimos un límite en esto. Hemos eliminado otros rótulos antes de esta acción, muchos nuestros planes en el pasado y muchos de los diseños en nuestra comunidad, lo que queremos hacer es queremos mejorar esos áreas de comercio, creo que eso es lo que esta convención señor Padilla en este lugar y creo que.
The capability to make the decision as acted on by the zoning administrator is the correct action, and I support Mr. Padilla in his motion today.
Que la acción correcta que lleva a cabo la administradora, planificación es lo correcto y por tanto apoyo la música del señor Padilla de ahora.
Thank you, Ms. Mizakowski. The chair recognizes Mr. Zain, followed by Mr. Holden.
Gracias. Quiero mandar un mensaje contrario de que este grupo. Está en contra de rótulos completamente en la ciudad de Los Angeles, hay unas que son vecinos como Quirchado. Hubo un movimiento. When I look at this area, I'm familiar with the area. The area is blighted, and Councilmember Padilla is trying to improve it. And I understand the gentleman who half his year's salary comes out of the billboard and the lady owns the property, the rent for the area, and I know the problems played by this public order because I worked in that area for many, many years. But I think we send up this message and we say we're going to start eliminating the billboards, and then we grant exceptions here and exceptions there, and we start having exceptions take over. Y después empezamos a tomar excepciones aquí, hablamos de advertencias realmente de donde rótulos si se permitían, no ahora se permiten, ahora si somos el único que fue probado entonces por tanto podemos incluir a rótulos que antes fueron aprobados, pero no, esperemos esto, yo por ejemplo en mi comunidad estoy luchando ahorita con una compañía de rótulo al cual están dando, están poniendo publicidad sobre un club de caballeros, ellos han sido buenos vecinos. Nuestros fiscal están trabajando de tratar de mejorar esta situación con un rótulo en aparto este muy. Yo entiendo a la industria de rótulo y también al dueño productor, pero cuando me hago un mensaje que queremos limpiar esta ciudad y los rótulos de esta ciudad este mensaje tiene que ser apoyado por nuestras acciones aquí, si vamos esta excepción entonces vamos a ver una excepción mañana, el siguiente, y la idea de que pasamos no significará nada, esta ciudad ha tomado la posición de quitar los rótulos a ellos y por tanto voy a apoyar a mi colega concejal Padilla de no otorgar esta permiso.
Thank you, Mr. Zain, Mr. Holden.
If you hold my time while I ask a question, Mr. President, the question is, how, your decision, how does it differ from the Area Planning Committee, which is elected by the Congress?
Okay, my decision was disapproval of the project. The decision was appealed to the Area Planning Commission, who found differently. She had the Planning Commission found that the location was appropriate. It found that Sepulveda was a major highway and that it was bordered by commercial users and that the project would not be detrimental to the community.
Is it conditioned for approval, major highway, was there major highway there, yes or no?
Yes, Sepulveda is a major highway.
It is a major highway. And under those conditions, sometimes you can approve, make those approvals. The height, is there a height limit?
The proposed height is 40 feet. It is within, it did not need any variance or any determination for the height.
What did it need a variance for, if anything?
It needed to have a plan approval because all signs and offsite signs are not permitted on commercial corners and the property does qualify and qualifies a commercial corner.
I see. We passed the ordinance limiting the billboards or restricting all billboards, is that correct?
Yes, you did, but when my determination, when the Planning Commission acted, that order was not in effect, so it was not taken into consideration.
So they don't have anything like grandfather rights or hardship or anything, they can't argue that at all?
No.
What was the application made? This is two years ago.
The building permit application, I think, was made in November 17, 2000, prior to the ICU being affected. And the application for the plan approval, if I remember well, was on August 21 of 2001.
Mr. President, at the top, Mr. Zain, I mean, you've been doing that, I just took notice of it back.
Mr. Holden, you're dialoging, and we're trying to move the dialogue.
Está conversando, estamos tratando de empezar con la agenda.
Some politeness is on both sides.
Sí, pero si estoy de acuerdo, yo ya mantengo, ya demoré su tiempo y lo haré de nuevo otra vez, gracias.
Yes, I was saying the application for the plan approval was filed on August 21, 2001.
Okay, well, I don't, if they don't have a legal argument.
Si, no tiene un argumento legal. Entonces claro, creo que quiero votar para apoyar esa moción, creo que es adecuado, el fiscal no está que es que no puedo hacer esta pregunta, pero quiero decirles que es un argumento legal.
All right, well, fine. I think that, in all fairness, the council person for their district has to be responsible to their constituents and I'm sure that he has a better feel for what the need is that I do.
Población, él sabe lo mejor, sabe mejor lo que es, cómo necesita, el señor Zain sabe sobre esto, yo no, solo puedo yo seguir la recomendación de ellos y algunas veces es difícil para el solicitante que entienda esto cuando ellos ya lo han realizado todo muy bien, lo han preparado y sienten que debemos de votar a favor de ellos considerando que hay cinco personas que están close en la Comisión de Planificación, que fue nombrado por el Alcalde y nombrado por nosotros. Es una decisión muy difícil, creo que uno siempre puede hablar con, debe haber cierta área de organización, no es España, pero por ahora, no sé dónde apelará esto, pero nosotros yo voy a votar también con el concejal del distrito, considerando el hecho de que él representa esa área y sabe muy bien lo que necesita de esa área.
The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco with this moment, he's the last speaker.
Mr. President and colleagues, I wanted to just a little bit reiterate what Mr. Holden had said, just simply that we have a lot of balancing acts here in terms of different viewpoints, the zoning administrators, the planning commissioners, and our responsibilities, councilmembers. And I am going to support Mr. Padilla's request at this point because he's in a better position. But I also wanted to make very clear to Mr. Zain that I think we definitely put a ban on new billboards coming to the city of Los Angeles, but we also, we are still pursuing and supporting the billboard reduction program that deals with freeway billboards in certain locations in certain areas. And I know there's a number of us who want to take advantage of that billboard reduction program to eliminate blight in residential portions of our cities. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that there's a two-pronged approach to our issue of billboards and that was part of our decision.
Thank you. I see no other members wishing to be heard at this point. Mr. Clerk, what's before us? There is a motion moved by Mr. Padilla, seconded by Ms. Mizakowski to disapprove the APC action of uphold the ZA decision. All right, thank you, members. We're now ready to vote. Please open the roll.
Listos para votar, abra ese voto.
Close the roll.
Cierre ese voto.
Now tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Thank you. Is there a request that I go forth with? And that will be the order. Thank you, next item, please.
Asumo. 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 Asumo.
All right, no other person wishing to be heard, or at least not recognized at this moment. No cards on this matter, please open the roll.
Abra ese voto.
Close the roll.
Cierre ese voto.
Now tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Thank you, next item, please.
Gracias, procedamos.
Item 54, called special by Councilmember Zain.
El concejal Zain.
Mr. Zain, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could get the representatives to come forward on this issue.
Quiero que los representantes pasen, entiendo yo que originalmente el departamento de policía quería eliminar el detalle de pistola y permanece hasta el presupuesto.
And concerned about how many we have assigned to the enforcement and how that corresponds with the city attorneys and district attorneys and the prosecution of those cases.
Proyecto y al resumen de esos casos.
But how that all correlates together and what we have actually assigned, that will be assigned to this function.
Se lleva a cabo.
Captain Fierro, I'm Detective Headquarters Command Officer, and the gun unit is staffed at this point with eight investigators. And we've had meetings with the city attorney. We've had meetings with my chain of command, and we're ready to support the city attorney efforts in this matter. We're going to probably add one, maybe two more bodies to work specifically with city attorneys in these cases. So the gun detail is healthy and up and running and not going to be eliminated.
Este proyecto es saludable, está listo, no se ha eliminado, pero en el momento cuando bajo presupuesto se pidió eliminarlo, sí creo yo, pero no se ha segurado, preso se lleva a cabo, permanece intacto.
Okay, and how will that coordinate with the district attorney's office, with the enforcement? I know if it's pawn shops, they're checking, or the gangs, where they're seizing the weapons or how that comes together. The coordination, we have neighborhood prosecutors, we've got community policing, how does this all link together?
Tenemos la comunidad que están llevando a cabo la seguridad pública.
If I can respond to that, Earl Thomas, the head of Criminal Branch Operations in the city attorney's office, here on behalf of Rocky Delgado Díaz, to respond to your question, councilman. This grant calls for, and we've applied for, three prosecutors to use federal money to prosecute gun cases. Our plan is to assign two prosecutors to work very closely with the LAPD gun unit to deal with a non-traditional approach to attack the distribution and the illegal trafficking of guns at the source by focusing on federal firearms licensees. Basically, the way it works is in Los Angeles, there are approximately 160 federal firearms licensees who are called FFLs operating in the city of Los Angeles. They have acquired a federal firearms license. However, in order to sell, purchase weapons pursuant to your federal firearms license, you must also get a permit from the Los Angeles Police Commission in order to conduct business in that manner in the city of Los Angeles. The problem is that many of these licensees have not obtained the requisite local permit, and thus they are really not authorized to be engaging in this activity. In addition to that, those who have federal firearms licenses and who also have the proper police commission license are sometimes not monitored as closely enough. Our local ordinances give us the opportunity to inspect these premises, to examine their books and records, and if they fail to comply with local law, they are not able to get a local license, and in addition to that, we can revoke their federal firearms license. We have a number of FFLs who are literally under the radar screen, to use a phrase, because they're not being monitored, who are literally selling thousands of illegal firearms without complying with local law in terms of recording that information, keeping track and logging that information, otherwise complying with the local ordinances that we have in place. So the design of this whole program is to get compliance from those licensees who have not gotten their local license to monitor those licensees who have acquired a license and those who do not comply to put them out of business and use civil remedies as well as criminal prosecution as a method of making sure they're not trafficking in guns illegally. And with the ammunition, I know that that takes place during certain holidays, will they be involved in that prosecution also? Yes, our prosecutors, we have several things that our prosecutors are going to do working in conjunction with the police department. One of them will be to review, as I said, the FFL situation. The other thing that they will do is review and prosecute cases. They will also look at local legislation, state legislation, and federal legislation, close any loopholes that are there, as well as respond to what I characterize crossover. There are many instances, for example, where a person is in possession of a weapon, maybe in violation of federal law, maybe in violation of state law, and maybe in violation of local law virtually at the same time. By crossover, I mean that if a case comes to us as a misdemeanor case but should be prosecuted as a felony, we want to cooperate with the district attorney's office and refer that case over for felony prosecution. We also, if a case comes to us where the defendant is in violation of federal law, cooperate with the U.S. Attorney's Office and refer that over for federal prosecution, which we're doing. Okay. This will be a citywide program? Citywide program, yes. In fact, I brought a map, working with the LAPD gun unit, we have identified already the number of licensees and where they are located throughout the city. I brought a map which sort of displays this. If I can show that to you for a second.
Si, puedo mostrarles.
There's 168, you say? There's 160 or so active licensees and there are approximately 20 or so inactive licensees. Generally, they're about anywhere from 180 to 200 FFLs in the city of Los Angeles at any given time. Now, do some of these people work out of their homes, or are they all in businesses in the business area? Precisely, that's a good observation. In order to get a federal firearms license, you can get an FFL even though you intend to operate out of your home, which is what we characterize and call your kitchen table dealers. You can do that and still have a federal license. However, when you apply for and in order to receive a local permit from the police commission, in order to get a local permit, you cannot, you cannot sell weapons out of residence. That's one of the conditions that conditions your ability to get a local license. In addition to that, by applying for the license, you consent to have your books and records and your property searched at any time by the police department in order to make sure that you are complying with local law and to make sure that you are not engaged in illegal trafficking. We recently had a case, just by the way of example, where a defendant who was prosecuted, a pursuit to an undercover operation, admitted that he had sold 1,400 arms of firearms over the course of about a year or so. He had a federal firearms license, but he did not have the, what was it, local permit. We believe that if we had known this information and if we had had this task force in place at the time, we probably could have prevented that. So there'll be a lot of these people who'll be put out of business from what you're saying? Exactly. Okay, thank you. Very supportive of the program, and I know that the members of the LAPD will be very supportive of it. Are the people going to remain in place, are they going to bring additional, the people who are already there in the unit, they going to maintain that strength, are they going to?
I'm led to believe that we're going to add at least two more bodies to the gun unit specifically to work these cases.
Police talk, police talk.
Police captain, talk to the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zain, Mr. Lavon.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Zain for that good inquiry. I want to thank the police department and also our city attorneys' office. That's a great way when you first spoke how you're going to try to really get to the root of the problem, because that's the root of the problem. Everybody should support the law, whatever the laws of this land, in this great country are, in this state, in this city, and those who are kind of circling around and that becomes the problem area. So this will hopefully be an effective tool for you to make sure people who do are in this business, they do it right and legally. That's all, right legally, that's all we want. Thank you very much.
Esto lo que queremos que se haga correcta y legalmente.
Thank you, Mr. Lavon. Other members wishing to be recognized on this item, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Abra ese voto.
Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
10, sí.
Item 54 is approved. Item number 58, called special by Councilmember Holden. And we do have cards on this item. Council calls forward at this time is Sylvia Hawkins. Is Ms. Hawkins still here?
Mr. President, members.
If not, then we shall deem the public hearing closed. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
It's going to be like some time, there's no urgency. If you want to set these two items, 58 and 59, for time certain tomorrow at 11 o'clock, we can do that, move the agenda.
Quiero extender, quiero.
Okay, although I do anticipate we'll have a session tomorrow as well. It's a pleasure of the body whether or not to continue items 58 and 59 for one day.
Necesitación del grupo de aplazar estos asuntos hasta mañana.
It's Prop Q, that's an issue that we want to keep moving forward. This is talking about the.
It's not, it's not that urgent.
It is urgent. This is an issue dealing with our bonds, our ability to hire people. No, 59 I said. He asked for 58 and 59 to be continued, so I think 59 be heard.
Be my guest. You can consume the time if you like.
On item 58, Mr. Holden has moved continuance. Is there a second?
Quiero un aplazamiento para asunto 58.
Mr. Lavon, seconds, a motion to continue. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll on the motion to continue item 58 for one day.
La moción de aplazar 158 hasta mañana.
Members, the roll is open on the motion to continue item 58 for one day.
La moción de aplazar asunto 58 un día.
Mr. Clerk, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
10, sí.
Item 58 is continued.
158 ha sido aplazado.
Item 59 is before it. Item number.
Item number 59. Ms. Misekowski.
The staff should report on 59 about water trading, trading pollution. What are we trading here?
Estamos hablando acerca del tratamiento de contaminación.
Proposition Q. Proposition Q, so that we, the work can get done.
Yeah, Proposition Q and the bond measure.
Proposición Q y la medida de bono.
Actually, we're still voting on succession.
Estamos, por tanto, todavía división de separaciones. Está pendiente. Categoriza este asunto como especial porque sí.
If we float a bond, use some of Prop Q's money to...
Utilizamos fondos de la proposición Q para propósito de construir una estación de policía.
Right now, yes, there's a...
Yeah, police station.
Estación de policía, proposición Q.
I think for the record, you should state what the purpose of Prop Q was for.
Con su propósito de proposición Q.
And then what you're using it for and why and for how long?
Para qué lo están usando, por cuánto tiempo, después hablaré.
Proposition Q is a $600 million general obligation bond issue that was approved by the voters in March 2000.
El 1600 millones que fue aprobado por los votantes a más de 1,000 millones de este proyecto. Hay doce proyectos.
Police stations, two bomb shelters, the emergency operations center that was built as part of this program over a course of about six years. This report provides initial funding and positions to start calling those projects.
Fondos iniciales y posición para empezar, iniciar este proyecto.
The proposition Q, the LACO resolution on value succession.
Proposición Q, la resolución de LACO en división del Valle.
Includes language that states that an issued general obligation bonds will be allocated between the two cities based on location of the projects, and this was a concern that was raised in Q and Personnel Committee. That language has been added to the file.
Estamos pidiendo su autoridad, su aprobación para contratar trabajadores, trabajar en este proyecto, con espino termes autoridad para...
We're also requesting your authority to issue bonds to move forward and move it forward very aggressively to build the West Valley Police Station. We own the land right now. Muchos somos dueños del terreno ahora. As in F and other Q projects, we're having some challenges in acquiring land that will fit some of our service needs and requirements of both the police, fire, and animal services departments. In this instance, we own the land. We have, we've already designed the facility. We're ready to break ground and start building this police station. This is a commitment we've already made to the community. It's important that we move forward on this now. I know there's a question regarding debt, but the Valley resolution has been revised through the efforts of our city attorneys, CAO and CLA staff to address the debt obligation issue. For debt issued up until the effective date of the resolution, the remaining city in the proposed city will continue to be obligated for their fair share of that debt. On a go-forward basis, it will be based on, the debt will be based on where the facility is located. And so we feel comfortable with how the resolution that currently exists with respect to the debt obligation issue. And we ask for your support now to go forward so we can issue these bonds, hire the staff, and fulfill our commitment to the citizens who voted for this proposition to build these projects on time and within budget. Thank you.
En llegar lo que le permitimos a estos votantes, los votantes que aprobaron esto. Lo que me preocupa es que van a cambiar uno punto cuatro millones de un fondo a otro y no hablan de esto.
You should put all the facts on the table, Mr. Pujioke.
Ponga todos los hechos en la mesa, señor. Esta propuesta es para...
I know, but you didn't say it, and I think it needs to be said for the public to know.
You're absolutely right. As part of this request, we're also asking for loans from the sewer and maintenance fund to give us some upfront cash that will be reimbursed once we issue the bonds. It is just for cash flow purposes, it will allow us to get moving on this project now, and then the money will be fully reimbursed once the bonds are issued.
Otorguen los bonos.
And then B, incremental amounts transferred thereafter, up to three million to the general fund, what is that all about?
The total amount requested as a loan from SCM Sewer Construction and Maintenance Fund is $3 million. We plan to draw down $1.5 million immediately to pay for the architectural contract for the West Valley Police Station. And if we need to, during the remainder of this month, draw down incremental amounts up to $3 million. However, I'd like to point out that the mayor and council have approved the city to issue 155.2 million dollars for Proposition Q. The bonds will be sold July 17th. The money should be available July 31st, so we will repay this loan immediately.
Después pagamos este préstamo directamente. Entiendo lo que están tratando de hacer.
But it's important that you share all the information, members of the council, and to the public.
Que comparten toda la información a los miembros del Consilio y al departamento.
That you're taking sewer construction and maintenance money, that was a bond was voted on for the purpose of improving our sewer system, is that correct? Yes, I think you answered.
Is that correct on a very short-term basis?
Yeah, that's correct. For whatever term it is, you're moving money around and you're not using it for the purpose of which the voters voted for. And for the purpose which EPA and federal government lawsuit require that we use the money for.
Understand, but the money will be repaid with interest, and so the fund will be maintained. And there will be no projects, services, or programs supported by the fund will be judged.
I don't want to have to just smoke here out of luck, but I'm just saying, it just doesn't look right to use this approach and not to share the information with the members of the council. I mean, they're going to have to have a historical memory also about what we do and how we do it. And it's a slippery maneuver.
En lo que hacemos y como lo hacemos.
That's what it is.
Es una manipulación, estrategia. Es un proceso. Vamos a demostrarles, ustedes van a poder tomar dinero de este fondo para este propósito. Puede ser también para otro propósito, necesita dinero. Si es legal para este propósito, va a ser legal para otros también. De ser re, que se reembolsa después en otra fecha después.
I would say that, yes, go ahead and do it. There's agreement on the table where if the valley should vote to secede, then it becomes their obligation, not their obligation.
Es una obligación de ellos, una obligación. De estos bonos, hay una fecha límite obligación en esta ciudad ya que no están votando por ellos. Estamos votando para que empiecen, supre todo, si ellos se separan, entonces van a pagarnos por cualquier deuda que se lleve acabo antes del primero de julio, dos mil dos, pero no sea...
See, the bonds will be sold later this month, so for any debt issued prior to July 1st of 2003, both remaining cities in the proposed cities will still be responsible for their fair share of the debt.
Any debt that's issued prior to what?
July 1st of 2003. The effective date. So with respect to what we're asking you to do today, both remaining cities and the proposed cities will still be responsible for that debt and will pay their fair share of the debt service. And what we're doing right now is part of a, we do have an existing reimbursement process that will allow us to borrow money from other funds and then reimburse it at a future date when we issue bonds. And it's something we've done repeatedly in the past. And we attract this very carefully to make sure that fund is fully repaid with interest.
Y eso veremos que ese fondos se ha pagado reembolsado con interés. Gracias, policías, gracias por lo que están haciendo, utilizando su proceso, su conceptualización para que este proyecto empiece. Necesita los votantes, lo votaron, lo quieren. Hay puntos de investigación para hacer, a los que todo se llevará a cabo bien.
You know, push ahead right now. Push ahead fast and hard and meet your timeline, meet your date, get the project going. But within the next 30 days, Mr. CAO, develop a program. Through your bond programs, all of them, not just this one, we inform the neighborhood councils what we're doing, how we're doing it, so they become part of the process. And I just asked for a second on that in the process. Second, okay, thank you very much. Charge ahead. Get them built, get them built.
Construyen, construyen esos proyectos. Siguen adelante, señora Misekowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, four months ago, voters in this city voted for Proposition Q and supported it by a two-thirds vote. What the CAO is doing is hitting the ground running, giving us this effort, the recommendations as to where and how the money shall be utilized so that we can hire the engineers, the architects, the account managers, the plan managers to move quickly. And as he indicated, luckily in this area, we, many of the projects, some of the first parts are going to get built are going to be built on land that we already own, so we don't have to spend difficult time trying to assemble land. We can build, we can start now. If we approve this, hire the staff, and put the money in the fund that will be reimbursed in thirty days once those bonds hit the market. The issue relative to the valley came up at LACO. And in fact, it was one of the rare instances where the applicants for valley vote, as well as the city of Los Angeles, were in concurrence, because the applicants for the valley realized that a number of those projects are going to be built in the valley, and it was important to have those bonds go forward. As the resolution from LACO had been originally presented, nothing had gone forward to build any of the projects in the valley. That was reconciled, that was changed, so that in fact, those projects will go forward with all citizens in the city as we know today, whether in the valley or whether in the South Mulholland, shall pay their appropriate share for the projects as were determined for those bonds that will issue before a year from today. So I'm asking the council to approve this whole heartly and unanimously so that we can keep moving forward. We made a promise to our voters that we were going to deliver these projects on time and on budget, and this is the way to do it, to get started and get the people in place and not to wait over a protracted time so people can actually start seeing these projects being built. So I ask for unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Misekowski. The members wishing to be recognized, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. That is approved.
Mr. President, forthwith, please.
Yo, presidente.
Done. Thank you.
Next item. Mr. President, item number 64 is closed session item. Do you wish to take public comment to this time, Housekeeping? This is public comment, it's an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward at this time, Mr. Christopher Taylor.
Sr. Christopher Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Christopher Taylor, live in District 14. In 1998, Councilman Nate Holden, City Attorney Richard Schmidt, and members of the 10th District Community recognized that advertising on government poles and signs had reached epidemic proportions. That epidemic, however, is a mere drop in the bucket compared to the plague of door-to-door flyer advertising discarded on private property every day. The state of California recognizes this type of advertising as a public nuisance and a misdemeanor under Penal Code 556.1. It is also an invasion of our property that robs us of our right to pursue safety, happiness, and privacy afforded to us by the Constitution of California in Article 1. Civil Code 3479 defines a nuisance as anything which is indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. Being required to post signs on our own property is also offensive to the senses and interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property. Aside from that, the fact is that signs don't work. I tried. I was told by SIP's marketing that even by giving them my home address, there is no guarantee I won't ever receive advertising from them on occasion. This is unacceptable, because we can stop the newspaper and hold our mail when we go out of town, yet the relentless advertising never stops, allowing everybody to know who is and who is not at home at any given time. Based on our own distribution claims of 4.3 million homes per week, I conservatively calculated this one company responsible for 42,961 tons of doorstop advertising every year, doorstep that is. I offer possible solutions. The city of Los Angeles could generate hundreds of thousands of dollars by issuing yearly permits such as Glendale and Pasadena already do. These permits, however, require that permission be obtained from the owner or leasing of the property before an advertisement is placed, preserving our rights. Violation of these permits must be enforced and punished by strict fines. It should also be noted that when I caught these guys in the act and just questioned their distributor, he put me on the phone with someone representing SIP's marketing, and they threatened me, and that company is owned by the LA Times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. I recognize Mr. Pacheco.
Quiero compartir con este caballero que nosotros vamos a... Las opciones a investigar a este asunto y trataremos de...
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Motion to postpone the referral. Those questions, those... Request for excuse from council. Councilmember Garcetti requests for excuse on July 16th to leave at 11:00 a.m. This meets policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests for excuse on July 30th for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to leave at 11:00 a.m. on July 24th for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Holden moves. Mr. Weiss is excused.
And Councilmember Perry requests for excuse on Wednesday, July 3rd for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes moves. Ms. Perry is excused.
And Councilman Burtonson requests for excuse on July 3rd to leave at 11:30. For personal business, a motion is required.
Ms. Gruehl moves. Mr. Burtonson is excused. And now, item number 64 is before you, it's a closed session item. It confirms the California law that the council will now adjourn to closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item 64B, there is a motion on the desk to approve 299,000 in settlement of case.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
The desk is clear.
Are there any announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Yes, Councilmember, I just want to announce that Plumb will start at 2:30 today.
Okay, Mr. Zine.
I'd like to announce to our viewers that there will be a free Fourth of July extravaganza at Warner Center Park. That's at Topanga in Oxnard, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m., free concert and fireworks show the Fourth of July. All viewers are invited.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Holden, for an announcement.
Mr. President, I'm just pleased to announce and make known to the public that on Saturday, I think it was, Saturday morning, at 3:00 a.m., there were more than 20,000 soccer fans at the Staples Center, and they're all wearing red shirts, including myself. And I got to tell you, I've never seen, I've been to Staples Center many times, but I never was there where they had standing room only. And we should commend those managers of the Staples Center for making that sports facility available for the community. Prior there too, we had to close down Sixth Street twice, there was some noise, of course, and the request was to close down Wilshire Boulevard to watch the soccer match from Korea on the big screen. But once the quest was known for the need, then Mr. Lawiki and others made the Staples Center possible, and he was there at 3:00 in the morning. He said, "I've never seen anything like it, and neither did I, and this city should be proud of the fact that there was not one single disturbance, even though Korea did not win the game against Turkey, and it was just a sight to be seen." And I just want to make that known to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other announcements? Mr. Lavange?
Yeah, Mr. Holden, very good there. I also want to congratulate Brazil, World Championship, which is a great sport. I am not a soccer fan per se, I'm a old football fan of American football, but the great thing about that sport is you see how exciting it is throughout, especially in our community, so I think it's wonderful. And all the participants, including our own United States team and the team from Mexico and Germany and Turkey, it was wonderful to see all that take place. Great event. I did want to just also add to the celebration of announcements that my staff member Jane Galberth gave birth to, two twins, twin girl, twin boy, Marshall, Anton, and Francis Marie, and mother and children are doing fine, and she's back at home and everything's well. So there's a good topping to expand and expand the beauty of life, so I wanted to congratulate Jane and her husband for that wonderful thing. Marty?
Congratulations. You have two more Angelinos. Other announcements?
They're residents of the 10th District, that's the only problem, I want to get them in the other side.
And named after your alma mater, no doubt, with Marshall there. Jane's husband looks like Marshall Dillon, he's a good-looking tall guy, so that's why...
Mr. Lavange, you're known as the historian of the council. Mr. Lavange, you're known as the historian of the council. Have a question for you. When was the last time we had a council member who was head of the MTA, head of the AQMD, and head of SCAG all at the same time?
That's very good. No, I don't think it's, I don't think it could be Marvin. Marvin get every, all those, I don't know if we ever did. I don't know if John ever did that. Maybe when it's the County Transportation Commission.
No, I think this is a city first, and I know...
Congratulations, Hal.
He had to leave a little bit early today. I'm sure to take care of one of those agencies, but also wanted to acknowledge and congratulate Mr. Burton for his wonderful leadership in all of those regional organizations that are so important for the future of the city and the future of the region in every public policy issue that we can imagine. Mr. Holden.
We did have Mr. Alatorre, who was a councilperson, headed up, I think, LA CTC at the time, it could have been MTA, but Richard was there, but never SCAG, I have to say, concurrent.
SCAG and AQMD. Other announcements? Adjourned motions? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. This is for Mr. Ridley Thomas, councilmembers, members of the public. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Irv Kays, who had a multifaceted career as a sports executive and became an award-winning sports talk show host. And as a sports executive, Mr. Kays worked with teams such as the Los Angeles now Anaheim Angels, New York Yankees, San Diego Chargers, Los Angeles now Oakland Raiders, and the San Diego now Los Angeles Clippers. In April nineteen ninety-two, Mr. Kays began doing his show for KRLA AM eight-seventy, formerly K-I-E-V, and was named six times as L.A.'s best radio talk host by Southern California sports broadcasters. His show was the longest-running sports talk show in this market. Irv Kays was born on September second nineteen twenty-six. A private service was held on Monday, July first two thousand and two, and a public service will be held at a later date. He is survived by Barbara, his wife of seven years, his son Benji, two grandchildren, and five step-grandchildren.
Mr. Lavange.
He was a wonderful man. I knew him from the Raider games, and I just saw him, I think, recently, Wendy, I think he may have been at one of the lectures we heard from Dr. Kevin Starr. I mean, I saw him just recently. He lived in the San Fernando Valley, and he always had a positive feeling about everybody. So, it's always sad when someone goes, but he certainly contributed to his profession and his community and his family. He's a wonderful man.
Other tributes? Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request that we adjourn in memory of Annie Nasif, passed away May ninth. I knew Annie and her family, resident of Van Nuys, the mother of three children, Alexis, Christopher, and Paul. She was born in Pennsylvania on August eighth nineteen twenty-one, married to Saban Nasif on May fourteenth nineteen forty-four. They were married for fifty-eight years. She will be greatly missed by all in her family. She's survived by her husband Saban and three children, Alexis, Christopher, and Paul. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Colleagues, also ask that we adjourn in memory of Stacy Baker. Some of you might have read about her tragic death just this last week. She was raised in Santa Barbara, graduated from California State University Northridge, and became a teacher in LAUSD in nineteen ninety-nine. She's been teaching at Beechey Avenue Elementary. In her very, very brief and young career, she was an outstanding teacher, the kind of teacher that students were just naturally drawn to, and she had a particular affection for children who were struggling with their academics or even controlling their behavior. She tutored many children on her own free time and was known to frequent all the birthday parties and family barbecues that she could attend for her students and former students as well. She was very involved with the family and the school community and will sorely be missed by the Beechey Avenue Elementary family. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.